Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Chair Seabird.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spahl.
Here.
Mrs. Bressia.
Here.
Ms. Blen.
Here.
Ms. Breeden.
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a forum.
Thank you. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No ma'am.
Can I get a motion to approve our public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as amended.
Second. Did we amend it?
Isn't the addition? The addition and correction.
This is okay.
Let me correct that. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, on our agenda this evening is superintendents announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford, will you please lead us off?
I sure will, with pleasure. Thank you Chair Seabird. Good evening to other members of the board and good evening to everyone that has joined us tonight. It's nice to have a full house. Before I begin our spotlights for the evening, I have a couple of announcements that I would like to make. I want to remind everyone that tomorrow, October 23rd, is a professional day for teachers and an early release day for students. There have been many acknowledgements and recognitions around the division all month long, like Hispanic Heritage Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Virginia Farm to School Week, and many others. Last week, we saw lots of orange around the division for bully prevention. There were several school activities around anti-bullying during the month, and you will hear more about that during the November meeting. Shout out to our school transportation staff, as this week is National School Bus Safety Week, and tomorrow is School Bus Transportation Employee Appreciation Day. So we want to say thank you to them for safely transporting our students back and forth to school and all the other activities that they do each week. Now, we will go right into our Apple and Pear Awards for our spotlights tonight. Our Apple Award winners represent members of our instructional staff in the division, and each person was nominated by one of their peers. Additionally, our Pear Award winners are employees who support the teaching and learning environment in many other ways, often behind the scenes, like the Apple Award. They too are nominated by one of their peers. So we will begin tonight with our Apple Award recipients. We'll begin with Baldwin Elementary, Laney Smith. Excuse me. Ms. Smith creates a positive learning environment for her kindergarten students, helping them reach their full potential. As the team lead, she fosters collaboration and inspires those around her to excel, making her a valued Baldwin Rocket leader. Congratulations. Our Jenny D person couldn't be here tonight, Allison Gall, but we would like to congratulate her in her absence. Our next elementary is Hayden, and we have Jennifer Metcalf. And the cheer squad. Jennifer Metcalf is a committed educational facilitator who equips teachers with practical strategies to support student progress. She promotes high standards with adaptable approaches and shares her expertise with understanding. Her dedication ensures Hayden students achieve their "I can" goals in reading and math. Congratulations, Ms. Metcalf. From Round Elementary, Regina Bullock. Ms. Bullock is a skilled and passionate pre-K teacher, whose dedication to children's development is evident in every interaction. Her enthusiasm for teaching extends throughout the entire school day, continually fostering learning and growth for our early learners. She has a profound impact on the school's culture and climate, and making her a valued asset to the profession and to our community. Congratulations to you. From Weems Elementary, we have Emily Triantofilo. Ms. Triantofilo is a dedicated first-grade team lead who consistently puts her teammates first and goes above and beyond her duties. As the PBIS committee leader, her innovative work has positively impacted the school. She maintains a positive attitude, supports her colleagues, and is committed to student success, making her a valued and respected team player. Congratulations to you. Thank you. Over at Baldwin Intermediate, we have Caitlin Heskey. Ms. Heskey is an asset to the Baldwin Intermediate family. As a sixth-grade teacher, she goes above and beyond her role to ensure proper preparation for collaborative learning team meetings, or CLTs, and her daily lessons. As a team player, she lends assistance to staff wherever necessary, as long as she is able to do so. So congratulations. Thank you. Our next intermediate is none other than Mayfield, and we have Patricia Torres Gonzalez. Ms. Torres Gonzalez is a dedicated educator who supports students both in class and through sponsoring the robotics and Harry Potter Clubs. She contributes to the dual-language program by teaching sixth-grade science in both Spanish and English, and coaches cooperative learning strategies. Additionally, she fosters staff community by organizing activities to bring colleagues together outside of the school. Congratulations. Thank you. Over in the middle, Metz, we have Abigail Huser. Abigail Huser is the science lead at Metz. She exemplifies the qualities of a dedicated, positive, and impactful educator. Her students are a top priority, and she ensures they receive the best version of herself every day. Ms. Huser is an asset to Metz, and her commitment to students, colleagues, and the school community makes her highly deserving of this Apple Award. Congratulations, Ms. Huser. And from Osborne High School, Payel Saxina. Ms. Saxina is a chemistry teacher at Osborne. Her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to student success make her the perfect candidate for this award. She selflessly leads her team without seeking recognition, for her countless hours spent preparing materials and supporting students after school. Congratulations, and thank you for that. That concludes our Apple Award recipients for this time, so we'll have everybody come together for a group photo. It's a special moment, we want to accommodate that. All right, next we have our Pear Award winners. Right. And we'll go right into it and begin with Baldwin Elementary, Fabiola Torres Weed. Sorry. Ms. Torres Weed is an exemplary instructional assistant who mentors others, overcomes challenges, and consistently strives to improve the program for students. She is a dedicated advocate for both students and colleagues, always ready to help and solve problems. Her commitment and efforts have shaped a safer, more supportive learning environment, making her a valuable role model. Thank you, Ms. Torres Weed. Next, we have Dean Dolphin over at Dean Elementary, LeDoo Cabrera. Ms. Cabrera is a fantastic family liaison at Dean. She is not only there to help families, but to also assist staff whenever they need her. Ms. Cabrera helps families unconditionally, and they see how committed she is to her social work. She is a great resource to the Dean family. Thank you. At Hayden Elementary, Maria Martinez. I love it. Maria Martinez is the head custodian at Hayden, and she's a vital asset there, always ready to help with a smile. She ensures the facilities are clean and welcoming, showing great care for the community. Her leadership and dedication make that building shine. Congratulations, Ms. Martinez. From Round Elementary, Noe Garcia Estrada. I think he couldn't be here tonight, but he is the custo- I'm sorry, Food Services Manager at Round, and we congratulate him in his absence. At Weems Elementary, we have Patricia Montesinos. Ms. Montesinos goes the extra mile. She is the family liaison over at Weems. She goes the extra mile to keep families informed and ensure students' needs are met. Ms. Montesinos is dedicated to supporting students and parents, always finding answers when needed. Her commitment makes her a vital bridge between Weems and our community. Congratulations, and thank you. From Baldwin Intermediate, Sylvia Vasquez de Ortiz. Ms. Ortiz is a custodian at Baldwin Intermediate. She maintains a positive relationship with staff and cheerfully completes her task. She respectfully interacts with staff and students and quickly completes her task, even unpredictable ones, with a smile. Ms. Ortiz is an appreciated member of the Baldwin team, and we congratulate you. Thank you. From Mayfield Intermediate, Elsa Alfonso Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez's dedication and positivity make her an invaluable asset, who creates a welcoming and supportive atmosphere. Her problem-solving skills and can-do attitude help her tackle challenges with innovative solutions. Her selflessness extends beyond her role, as she eagerly volunteers for activities that strengthen bonds and boost morale in her organization, Mayfield. Congratulations. From Metz Middle School, we have Yolanda Reyes. I've known Ms. Reyes a long time. Ms. Reyes is a wonderful custodian and goes above and beyond the call of duty, always with a smile. She wholeheartedly loves Metz Middle School, its students, and staff. Her dedication ensures that her work is done to perfection, earning the appreciation of all. Congratulations, Ms. Reyes. Next, we have Osborne High School, Jessica Berrios. Jessica Berrios is a deserving candidate for the Pear Award as Osborne's Administrative Associate, demonstrating patience, support, and professionalism. She leads the front office with a warm smile, providing helpful guidance and solutions. Osborne greatly appreciates her proactive approach and unwavering positive attitude. Congratulations to you. Our Central Office recipient couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately. Her name is Alexis Yates Parham, and she works in the procurement office, and so we congratulate her in her absence. And from our Transportation Department, Maria Tonison. She has been a dedicated bus driver for Manassas City Public Schools since 2007, maintaining a flawless safe driving record. Right. Go School Bus Safety Week, right? She creates a welcoming environment for students by greeting them warmly, and often volunteers to cover additional runs, ensuring timely and safe arrivals. Her commitment and contributions make her a valued and exemplary member of the transportation team. Thank you so much. And those are all of our Pear Award recipients for tonight, so if you all can join us over here. All right, congratulations to everyone. Thank you all. And now, this is a new addition that we instituted this year, our substitutes. Second year. Oh, I'm sorry, she said the second year. I'm so sorry. Yes, our second year. And, you know, it's so important that we recognize our super substitutes, because we know that unfortunately, there are times when people need to be out of the office, and they help us not miss a beat. And so, we're so grateful for them, and we have a few of them here tonight that we want to recognize. Baldwin Elementary submitted Raquel Berrios-Liva. Is she here? All right, so we thank her for the work that she does. From Dean Elementary, Maria Martinez. And then, from Hayden Elementary, Marty Sparrow. If "Let's Make Some Noise" was a person, there we go, right? Marty Sparrow is a retired MCPS teacher. And that's very important, because we love when our teachers come back to help us. So she serves as an exceptional substitute who prioritizes meeting students' instructional needs over at Hayden. She asks clarifying questions to help students stay on track when their teacher is absent. Her dedication and care for the Hayden community remain evident in her substitute role. Thank you so much, Ms. Sparrow. From Round Elementary, Carrie Bland. When Ms. Bland takes on a long-term substitute position, she also is a retired person from Manassas City Public Schools, she effectively communicates with her team and offers assistance where needed. Her lessons are well-planned, and in daily positions, she follows the provided plans while leaving helpful feedback for the teacher. Her presence ensures a productive day for her students. Congratulations, and thank you. Weems Elementary, Durga Jagadev. Also known as Ms. DJ. Ms. DJ is a sweet and patient person, those qualities that are especially important in a pre-K classroom. She stepped in during a teacher's sudden absence at Weems and took excellent care of the students. Her warmth and dedication ensure that students have everything they need when she is at school, and we congratulate and thank you so much. Mayfield Intermediate, Pam Belch. Ms. Belch is a retired MCPS teacher. Yes. She is always flexible in whatever role she steps into. She always has a smile on her face and is very friendly. The students at Mayfield love when she comes into their classroom, and Mayfield appreciates all the work that you do. Thank you so much. From Metz Middle School, Tala Faki. Ms. Faki is highly organized and thorough in her work, following detailed plans and asking questions when needed. Her commitment to student success is evident, as she adjusted her schedule to cover an extra day for continuity. The Metz team appreciated her support, and the students responded positively, staying up to date with expectations during her time in the classroom. Congratulations, and thank you so much. We do have a person from Dean Elementary we'd like to recognize, Maria Martinez. Ms. Martinez is a very important resource at Dean Elementary School. She's always willing to help and complete all the work that the homeroom teacher needs. Ms. Martinez also helps the kindergarten teachers with the students, even though she is not assigned that day. Her work is vocational, and they are happy to have an extraordinary permanent substitute. Thank you so much. And from Osborne High School, Pavelina Gueva. Pavelina Gueva has been a substitute for Manassas City Schools for a long time, demonstrating herself to be a caring, trustworthy, and respectful super-substitute. She consistently goes above and beyond her daily responsibilities, providing guidance and support to her students. Her collaboration with teachers and commitment to student success make her a valuable team member, leading to her endorsement for the Super Sub Award at Osborne. Thank you so much. Thank you all for the support you provide to our students and our community. We appreciate you so very much, and if you would join us over here for a photo, that'd be great. Yes. I know you see that they all have received little goody bags. One of them is a lanyard inside for them to wear their pins, so they can show people that they have received an award. So we congratulate all of them. I did get everyone. Anybody that stepped in afterwards? Okay. All good. All right. Our final spotlight for tonight is a short one, but an important one, is for our Virginia School Board Association Academy Awards. The Virginia School Boards Association recognizes board members for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardmanship skills through VSBA meetings, conferences, board development and training, and active involvement in the association. VSBA members earn credits for the VSBA Academy Awards, which are based on participation from July 1st to June 30th of each year. There are five levels of awards, with certificates and pins awarded for particular levels. The VSBA Academy Awards are presented annually to school board members who meet the requirements. The VSBA Academy Award levels are Award of Recognition, Award of Achievement, Award of Excellence, Award of Honor, and Award of Distinction. So you see a sample of the certificate that they receive on the screen. Our board members have received their certificates noting their personal commitment and their achievements to effective school board governance through their participation in the VSBA School Board Academy. So I will begin with Suzanne Seabird, Award of Distinction. Yes. Ms. Jill Spahl, Award of Distinction. We have Christina Brooks, Award of Honor. Dr. Kevin Newman, Award of Honor. Carl Hollingsworth, Award of Excellence. Robin Williams, Award of Excellence. Lisa Stevens, Award of Excellence. Sarah Bressia, Award of Recognition. And Alba Garza, Award of Recognition. So I know everyone sees our board members showing up at different events around the division and in the community, but there is much more to governance than just that. And so, we appreciate the time that you spend in Richmond, in Charlottesville, and across the state lobbying for us, advocating for us, attending meetings to better yourselves so that you can better serve our school community. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Moving along to board committee reports, and we have none today. Next meeting, we will have several. Oh, Mr. Hollingsworth, did you want to announce your academic meeting?
Thank you, Chair. Yes. On October 17th, Academic Committee met to discuss new course requests for FY '25 and '26. We also discussed school calendar for FY '25 and '26. So the school calendar feedback survey has been sent out and has a suspense date of November 11th. I'll have Chair. Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have another meeting coming up soon? Nope? Okay. Mrs. Brooks, do you have a Personnel Committee meeting coming up?
We have a personnel meeting coming up on November 6th.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Stevens, Chair of the Policy Committee.
Yes, we have a Policy Committee meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at Central Office. We'll be discussing policies JEDA, KIGCBE-M, and the Student Code of Conduct.
Thank you. Next up is Citizens Comments. We have no one signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to speak during Citizens Comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll continue on. Consent Agenda. We have a motion, please.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Spall, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. On our discussion agenda this evening, we have, under accountability, school performance update from Osborne High School. Dr. Jennifer Chapman and Mr. Cuffeller will provide an update on student performance at Osborne High School as well as strategies in place as part of the continuous improvement process. Mr. Cuffeller.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. At the September 10th meeting, we indicated that all of our schools that had a Level 2 or a Level 3 indicator would be presenting to the school board to explain and share their strategies for addressing their specific challenges. Tonight, Dr. Chapman, Principal of Osborne High School, will present the strategies that they are focused on to increase student achievement and reduce chronic absenteeism. Dr. Chapman began her role on July 18th, so not too long ago, and is doing an outstanding job of leading Osborne. So I welcome Dr. Chapman to the podium.
Brought the serious notebook tonight?
Hello, we ready to get the party started?
Yes.
I like it. First, I just want to say thank you so much for having me tonight. I very much appreciate everyone and how welcoming they have been bringing me into Manassas City Public Schools, from the school-based staff, from the staff at other schools that come out to support, to the school board member. I really appreciate the family community that the school system has, and I'm very much glad to be a part of it, okay? So I am, we have a lot to share tonight. I want to make sure we get through everything, and you have a chance to ask questions, and we'll dive right in, okay? So we're going to get started, not with how your normal presentations have been going, but I want to talk about some foundational structures that we started the school year with that have an impact across all of the accreditation areas. So there were some big shifts that happened at Osborne this year, if you've come to visit us, starting with the hiring of a rock star new principal that I hear things are going pretty well with.
Yeah.
Okay? And then from there, we realized when I came in, I met with my team, we did some deep dives into our data. And when I say my team, I don't just mean my admin staff, I mean my teacher leadership team that showed up literally my second week on the job to come into a quick meeting so we could start that instructional process of making our plans for the year. And we realized areas, we had to make shifts to start off the school year with the students to make sure that they are supported in all instructional areas and all areas of need. So we'll start with highlighting some of them. I get to be the clicker, forgot that, okay? And we just put some foundational structures in place. One of the ones that I really want to call out, because I tell my students all the time, it is undersold in importance in high school, but it is so important, once you leave the walls of the high school and you go out into the real world. And that is the concept of showing up on time, right? We actually had our administration go into every single English class to make sure we had a small group, one-to-one with the students, to talk about those student expectations, and not only tell them, hey, here's the rule, just comply with it, but have that conversation about the importance. With tardiness, what we explain to the students is there are incredibly severe consequences in the real world for being late persistently. For instance, what would happen if I just, you know, rolled in 15 minutes from now for this presentation? Pretty awkward, right? But in high school, those consequences are minimized because it is a time to practice, and it's a time to develop those skills and those habits that are going to make you successful in the real world, which is sometimes a disservice because we're not telling them exactly how important it is, but we're also giving them a chance to stumble, recover, and practice again and improve. So we added tardy sweeps as a process at the school that lets us randomly, because we got to go to brain science on that, right? What builds a habit the best we can? Have a tardy sweep. We have a really positive message on the announcement when we're having one. The students and teachers know the structure for now. We close and lock all classroom doors. We tell teachers, you're not to admit a student until they show up with a pass from us. The students then all come to our cafeteria. They can meet with their administrator, or the one with the shortest line sometimes, depending upon time of day. And we have a mini-conference with them. So my administrators are prepared with the most updated as of the previous day total of tardies that student has had for the school year. We let them know, and for some of the kids, it's actually a little shocking, right? And based upon that number they've hit total, we apply the appropriate consequence. So some students get a warning. I've had students come, and it's their first one, and I thank them for that, and I appreciate their commitment they have to school. And we have oppositely, some kids come, and it's their 43rd one, and then we have a slightly different conversation, and it lets us talk about the importance of changing that habit. With that, that's an additional structure we put in place at the school. We, as of last year, did not have any low-level disciplinary consequences for those behaviors that we want to practice. So we brought in lunch detention, and we brought in after-school detention pretty quickly into the school year, because the idea is, we don't want to be removing students from the instructional setting to apply consequences to them for a behavior that already has the missing instructional time, right? So we tell the students, you now owe that time back to us so you can come to us during lunch and we can reflect. We have a reflection sheet as part of all of our disciplinary consequences. Or you can come and see us after school. And for one or two kids, they actually get a week of after-school detention or a week of lunch detention who have the more persistent ones. But we also reset every quarter, so we get, give those students an opportunity to not feel like, oh, man, I'm in it so, like, I'm never going to get out of this tardy. We now have a, you know, restart. Let's do better next quarter. Let's see if we can make improvements, and we're able to track that progress. So a lot of it is working with our students on data that's very applicable to them in being self-reflective in their behaviors and how that supports their success. Similarly with that, and I want to say a huge thank you to the board because you really led the way with this one. I know you were ahead of the game with the governor, and I hope everybody else knows that, too. You saw that coming, the importance of removing cell phones from instruction. So by setting the policy you had in place already, we were able to come in at the beginning of the year, get the cellphone boxes set in for the classroom, explain to our community and our students the expectation, what the positives were to help them. And our students started off the first day, and I know my teachers were a little scared that first day, like, how's this going to go? But it worked out really well. And I hear significantly positive feedback now from my teachers about the increased level of engagement in the classroom when that distraction of the cellphone has been taken away. So that alone, I had a teacher this morning saying, like, my grades are up from last year. I'm teaching the exact same classes I taught last year, but like, my kids talk to each other. It's weird, but it's great. And that's what we want, right? We want to get the students back to a positive learning environment. We also realized that we could have the best instruction in the world in the classroom, right? But if our students are not in that classroom to engage in that instruction, is it going to mean anything to them? No. So we have two big focuses. We really want to maximize the time students spend in their classroom, right? Not in the hallways, not in the bathroom. That's there when they need it. But in their classroom, engaging in high-quality instruction. So it's a two-tier approach. We increased our security staff. We do have 10 members of security. We also work with the coordinator at Central Office, who has been a great support to the team. And we just also appointed one of our in-house security members as a team lead to work as a liaison between administration so we can streamline some of those processes and make sure we coordinate processes on the team. That has helped tremendously with making sure our students remain in our building, once they get there. And not just remain in our building, but remain in there. Where do we want them to stay? In there, classrooms, okay? And we can get them in there, and we can get them engaged in learning. We also looked at some of our data, and I'll touch on some of this a little bit later, and we'll see some connections with that. But we changed our schedule reduction process to make it more restrictive for students to get a schedule reduction and make sure that those who are having a reduced schedule are doing so because they are engaging in a high-quality, work-based, learning experience, okay? So there's a great educational component of doing that. We don't want to restrict our students who are having jobs. They're engaging in that, you know, career-focused and civic-focused aspect of life already as high schoolers. We want to do it with structure. So they also take career strategies where they have a teacher they work with to build those connections between what they're doing in the workforce and their future and their education, okay? We just brought in e-Hall Pass system. We had it running as a pilot at the very beginning of the year, and we've now expanded to our whole staff. And the neat thing about e-Hall Pass, we actually use it in conjunction with our lanyard passes still because we know in the hallway, you have a digital pass. Nobody sees a digital pass, right? So we want some type of visual cue that a student's approved to be in the hallway, right? That keeps our processes moving. But the data that you can get from that system is tremendous when having conversations with parents, right? Because we do have students who do show up on time to the beginning of class. They stay till the end of class, but they miss significant amount of class minutes during class because they're either going to the bathroom every single day during your class, or they're going to bathroom for extended breaks, okay? So when we're able to talk to parents about why the student's struggling, and also say, did you know, like, your child the last quarter spent this much time outside of my classroom? Could we look at their schedule? Could we talk about stopping on transition? Could we find another time of day to help them with that to make sure they're not missing that critical instructional time, okay? My next one's my favorite one. I get a little excited about this, and my school gets, they see me nerd out on it. But our school improvement process that we're following at the school right now is embedded within our entire staff, which I think really is going to make it critical. Now, it's a new process to the school. It's not how our staff has traditionally done that, so there is learning, right? We have some people here who've been in those meetings, but we're having really positive outcomes. So what that process looks like, we utilize our instructional council, which meets every two weeks, and that is the teacher leaders from each department, the administration staff, some of our critical school employees. Our testing coordinator will come when we need to. Our instructional facilitators come, our ITTSs. And then we, you know, we've had Ms. Zayats come when we were working on some components. So we have some members from Central Office, Dr. Casada and Ms. Tibbs came to support us sometime. And we work together on our continuous improvement plan. What that means is, we as teams are looking at our data together. This is not top-down Dr. Chapman coming in saying, I've looked at the spreadsheets, I know all the problems, and this is how we'll solve it. We talk with each other. We look at that data together. We discuss those root causes. My teacher leaders then go back to their departments, and they share out with them. And then they have subgroup, you know, sub-department meetings about that and bring it back to our team. And from there, we are building what our school goals need to be, which are in alignment with what our accreditation status is now. And more significantly, what are the strategies that we are going to use to reach those school goals, many of which you will find out in about five to 10 minutes, okay? But the nice thing about that is, this isn't just a, hey, here's what we're going to do to fix everything. We're building it from within the staff. There's a lot more ownership on it, and we're able to consistently, every two weeks, we're doing check-ins on this. So when we need to make pet pivots, when we need to make adjustments, we can do so in a timely manner, okay? Just talking about some change alignment with structures, we have an admin on duty, which is two administrators, myself included. I put myself in the rotation for it. Takes one day every week where we pretty much clear our calendar. Sometimes some of you jump on my calendar after it's cleared, but we try to keep our calendars clear to be reactive to situations that happen up. Usually low-level discipline, student, you know, hiding in the bathroom, maybe a kid trying to leave campus or something. So we can process them without always pulling their alpha administrator out of what they're doing. And the important thing about that is, that has now allowed my administration to spend the time in CLT meetings, in their teacher observations, moving instruction. And we're not just focused on being reactive to discipline because we have designated staff members that are there to manage the low-level incidences that are popping up. With that, we've also aligned with our greater security team, what is their role, what is my role, what is your role? And we have a lot of ownership in the process, so there's not confusion over who's going to search the student this time, who's going to do it? No. Student brought down, here's the behavior that is being alleged. This is the step this person will take. This is the step this person will take. And what we found is, that has allowed us to move more streamlined through those processes and then get the students back into the classroom much quicker versus sitting there waiting for somebody to get pulled out of a meeting to come down, be able to meet with them. For our high-level disciplines, we do still involve that alpha administrator in it because we make sure that that relationship that has been formed can continue. For the persistent behaviors, they have that perspective. But for our ones that are lunch detentions, our after-school detentions, things like that, we have somebody in the moment just processing. The consequence gets assigned in the moment versus maybe taking a week to think about, like, what did I even do last week that now I have detention for? And we're able to be reflective in the moment and move on. So none of those are specifically tied to, like, oh, this is moving English instruction. But what they're doing is they're foundational structures that are getting our students into class for longer amounts of time, and it's now providing the opportunity to have higher-quality instruction, which is what we're going to move into with the rest of our focus, okay? I am a very honest human being. The more you get to know me, you'll find that out, okay? So I'm not going to lie and look at our accreditation status that we walked into and be like, oh, this is okay. We can throw a Band-Aid on this and fix it, okay? We have to understand where we're at, and that's how we're going to be able to move forward. So Osborne High School is currently accredited with conditions. We have two areas where we are meeting the Level 1 standard that is in English overall achievement and our graduation and completion index. We have four areas where we are at a Level 2 status, which is our mathematics achievement, our English subgroup gaps, our dropout rate, and our CCCRI, but it's literally a percent and a half away from Level 1. So good clarification to put in there. That one's very close, okay? And we have three areas that we are currently at a Level 3 status, and we need to make sure that is not where we're at next year, okay? So we're doing a lot at the school to make sure that that doesn't happen, but that is in our science overall achievement, our math gap groups, and our chronic absenteeism, okay? So the order that I'm going to go through this is not necessarily the order you see up there. I did group together the focuses based on content areas. We'll talk about English, then we'll talk about math and science versus popping back around, okay? All right. So our first one to look at is English. So English is currently a Level 1, but like I said, right? It is important to ground ourselves in the data and make sure that that data's not always deceptive to us, okay? So there's multiple ways that you can achieve a Level 1 status in your accreditation report in the state of Virginia. You can either meet the metric that is set by the state in that calendar year, or you can get a Level 1 status based on your three-year average, okay? So where we are with English overall achievement, we are currently at a Level 1 status due to our three-year average, okay? Now, next year, a different set of three years is going to be in that average. So we realize that English is not an area that we can get lazy on. It is something that we need to make sure we're focusing on this year, and we are still improving. So when we lose our three-year ago term into that average, we're not going to lose the traction that we're making, okay? So some things that we are doing in our English area, we did have new standards come out in English. So this is always a process that we've done with prior standards, but we are in the current process of making sure that things are aligned to the current standards and not the prior standards, okay? So part of our CLT meetings and our cycle that work process, because we have new standards, is going back to that level of making sure that we've unpacked them. We've identified not just the content, but the rigor of the content, how it's supposed to be accessed, what are those action verbs, right? Is this just the kid doing, or is the kid explaining? Are they synthesizing? Are they analyzing? We want to make sure that they're aligned with what the current standards are. And then we're making sure that all of our assessments are also realigned with that, too, as well as our remediation focuses, our reassessments when we use them, too, okay? All of our learning and language goals, again, we want to make sure are in alignment. We are also significantly increasing the cooperative learning focuses for our reading focus in English. Now, what that means is, we are not leaving our students to be independent readers on their own, right? We want them practicing, interacting with each other, talking about what they're doing, explaining what they're doing because research shows, when you're the teacher versus the learner, you own it better. So we're creating more opportunities for our students to discuss their learning with others versus just sitting there and being receivers of learning. We are also explicitly teaching them skills that will make reading easier for them. So pre-reading skills, like, versus saying, hey, you know, here's a paragraph, just cool, jump right into it, no matter what your reading level is. What are things students can do to preview that ahead of time, set themselves up for structures that's going to help them have a higher comprehension level while they go through that? With that, we're also teaching them active reading skills. What are things you can do while you're reading? How many of you have read at least a page before? You finish it, and you go back and be like, I could not tell you a single thing I just read, right? So there's actually specific skills that we have to employ when we are reading to make sure we're meeting the comprehension on that, okay? With that, we're doing a combination of that collaborative practicing class, but we are also designating individualized time for each student, 20 minutes each period for our students to practice in Lexia, which is a research-based tool used to increase literacy rates with students, to make sure every student has access to that, to take where they're at and move them to where they need to be. Okay? Another neat thing that we have brought in just this year is collaborating with our English and social studies department together. There's been a shift to those LLAs, which we'll talk about a little bit later in here, which is a new approach to the state assessment for social studies, but very significantly relies on research skills, reading comprehension, making sure you can read a document, understand it, pull out important information, and synthesize that together into a new document and communicate about it. Right? Well, if I didn't tell you that that document was a historical document, that all sounds like English skills, right? So we're making sure they collaborate together. So when the students are practicing for their social study ones, they're using the same strategies that they're using in their English class and it's not reinventing the wheel with that. Okay? With our English achievement gaps, sorry, let me switch over here. Okay? I want to make sure, um, I kind of clarify this because there sometimes gets to be some confusion with the accreditation report. Right? So your accreditation report does not include all of your students in it. There are certain subsets of students that don't get counted towards them based upon the time they came into their school. For some of our English learner students, the time that they came to the United States, the time they came to our school system. Okay? So when you're looking at gap groups on your accreditation report, many English learners get excluded from the accreditation number, which can sometimes create a notion that they're performing well, right? Because they're not being reported in it. So it's very important for us that while our English learners are not one of our gap groups that we're looking at in our accreditation report, when we look at the raw data of the students who are both included in that and not included that, we do realize that there needs to be a focus on them too. So our students with disabilities in our English group is at a level-three. Okay? But that is our only group at a level-three. Because we only have one group at a level-three, that actually makes our overall level a level-two. Okay? And that's just following the state formula that's on there. But for us, we realize that while our students with disabilities need support, we also see data that supports our English learners need some additional supports too. So you'll see some of our models are actually supporting both subgroups. The co-teaching professional development cohort is not something we're doing just in English, so you'll see that come up again. But it's something that we are doing with all of our co-teaching pairings at the school. So they are now in a cohort that will run throughout the year, learning about different co-teaching models, having planning time with their partner, and figuring out how they are going to best incorporate the models within their classroom to try to improve that collaboration and also what that looks like in the classroom for the students. Make sure we're maximizing the skillset of both of the staff members who are in there by giving them the professional development, whether they're a new teacher or they're an experienced teacher, to figure out how they can best work together and highlight both of their strengths in the classroom. So that's something we're working with actually in all departments, but heavily hitting in English because we have a high number of both English learner co-teaching settings and students with disability co-teaching settings. Another skill we're explicitly looking at when we look at that language acquisition, not just of increasing literacy of people who are, English is their first language, but increasing literacy of students who have learning disabilities that interfere with their ability to do that naturally, or students who are English learners who have, English is a second language and now we're also trying to increase their literacy level in English. We're looking at that annotation skill and realizing that that's not just something that you need to do in a giant text, but it's actually something you can simply apply quite often. You can do it to a learning objective. You can do it to a question, helping our students sort through what they're being asked so they now feel more confident in how to appropriately answer it. Okay? And then we are also looking at using our CLTs to do some learning opportunities, to add scaffolds to the classroom by having our teachers investigate different ones that are research-based best practices. One of my, um, groups of teachers came to me at the school. They were specifically looking for strategies for English learners to increase engagement, discussion in the classroom. So we talked about seven steps to a language-rich interactive classroom. If you're not familiar with it, it's a great tool. It's very, seven very simple steps. One is an example, very simple, is what should students do when they don't know? Right? So it's giving, again, students strategies and skills to not opt out of learning, but to have supports in place when learning gets hard, so they can continue to push themselves to the next step. We're going to take a transition now over to math. Okay? So math overall is at an level-two. Okay? With that though, what I think is interesting is, again, we want to take a deeper dive into that data. Right? So where are we struggling in math? Because in math, it's not like English where it's one specific reading test, one specific writing test. Our students actually take three different subject area tests than math. Okay? A majority of our students take the Algebra I test. But as we have a significant number of students who take Algebra I in eighth grade, many of our ninth graders are starting in geometry. There is a federal participation requirement for them to sit for an SOL despite the fact that they have actually already met their SOL for their graduation requirement in eighth grade. So they're starting at geometry. So we actually have a really significant number of students still taking the geometry SOL, even though they may have passed Algebra I, but they passed it in eighth grade. So those are two large subsets. We did see that our geometry scores rose from last year to this year, but they still have a lot of room for growth. Okay? Our Algebra I scores, when you break it down by test, took a deficit. One of the issues we did realize, we did have some staffing issues last year where we lost one of our Algebra I teachers in the middle of the year and had a long-term sub. And then we were providing supports for that sub to try to give them, their students, the same type of access to the curriculum that the other students were getting throughout the year. Okay? So things that we are now doing in our math classes overall to make sure that we're bringing that math achievement up for everybody is a new process with practicing data dialogues with our teachers, but doing it on formative assessments. So our teachers are pretty proficient in using the summative assessments as common assessments to look at the data from that at the end of each unit and reflect as a team. But one of the problems that we run into with that is now the students who didn't perform on the summative assessment need to relearn the prior unit at the same time when they're now engaging in the content for the new unit. And if they're already a struggling math learner, we're putting a lot on their plate. Right? So we have developed a process this year to identify the most critical skills in each unit's common summative, develop common formatives, and build it into our CLT process to make sure those are given by a certain date. They are simple turnover ones for us to have discussions on to identify what are the specific skills that students are struggling on on this? And now provide scaffolded instruction, spiraled instruction, sorry, prior to the students sitting for the summative assessment, to try to scale down that group of kids that we're constantly relying on the remediation component with. Not only is it kind of a good process with the kids, it's really opened up some great conversations with my teachers, right? Talking about what is that most critical skill? With the kids going from Algebra I to the next class, what is a non-negotiable, do they have to be able to do to survive in their last class? We're getting a lot of vertical articulation between the math classes starting to, and we're identifying some other areas that we need to just support our students. Many of them, we, we talk a little bit about the Desmos effect, if you haven't heard that from them, but from pandemic and beyond, have had access to so many tools that do the math for them that we sometimes need to renorm them and say, we're going to practice doing the math on our own. So my Algebra I team is now also experimenting with adding Desmos free days in class where they're practicing doing the skills by hand, making sure they get those foundational skills. And just like a sport, getting the reps in to get them proficient on the skill before just going, hey, here's a tool to get to the answer. So they're not only proficient in the class they're in, but they're ready to move on to the next level of math. Now, we also have to work with our students who have not yet shown proficiency. So we created a new course this year called AFTA Focus. AFTA is our Algebra Functions and Data Analysis Course. And what it really is, is it's a hybrid course between Algebra I and Algebra II. It's a bridge course to get the students ready for that next level. If you guys remember from high school, geometry is like a hard-left turn in math, very different type of thinking. AFTA keeps you on that algebraic thinking, um, kind of like pathway. And it lets the kids continue to practice those algebra-based skills, which is a great opportunity for our students who did not pass the Algebra I SOL last year to now reinforce their skills. We're going to have 300 students testing in December on the Algebra I SOL that are previous failure students. But we're going to see if they can, after having a half of year, to reinforce, build those algebra skills, right? By accessing it at the higher-level algebra in the Algebra Functions class to retry again on that SOL and try to get to the recovery before they then become a student in geometry trying to take it again. The other idea is if we get those strong algebra skills when we get to geometry, right? We're going to be more successful because geometry, you got to know the property. But if you know the property, can set up the equation, and then you can't get the answer from it, those, they're still going to come back and get you. So making sure those foundational skills are solid with all of our students. Okay? Again, like in English, we have to get our kids talking about math, explaining math. They need to be the owners of math, so we're building that collaborative practice. We don't just want students taking notes from the teacher the whole class and copying it down like my college math experience. We want them actually generating, practicing the problems we're looking for the students doing in class, explaining to each other, becoming the teachers, and owning the material. Okay? Our math subgroups, okay? We need to focus a lot. So our level-three subgroups are economically disadvantaged students and our students with disabilities. However, like we said before, when we deeper dive into that data, we have additional subgroups that may not be level-three, but they still need support. So we're putting in supports that are going to make sure they focus on everyone's individual, unique needs. Our math teachers are also in the co-teaching cohort, so we can support our students who are in a co-teaching environment. And we have now added an outside-of-school additional intervention program. We have Saturday Learning Seminar. And Saturday Learning Seminar, if you're familiar with it, is more of a drop-in style seminar. So students are self-driven to go and get support, and then we have staff that are ready to go. We're adding on to that a referral process, after-school academic support. So students who have either been engaging in remediation with their teacher but not showing improvement, so something about what they're working with their teacher is not clicking with them, can give them an opportunity to get it from another lens. Or students who are not engaging in remediation with their teacher and they need to be engaging in remediation with their teacher. Right? We're going to help them build a habit for success of realizing, when I need help, I have to get that help by referring them. Their teachers can put a referral in. As part of that referral, it asks for very specifics. What are the skills the student needs to work on? Okay? Are there specific assignments associated with that you would like them to do? Is there a reassessment opportunity they can do after they practiced it, which they still qualify for if it's within the window for that? Okay? And then they will be assigned, their parents will be contacted, not just by the teacher, but by our coordinator. The student's going to get a hand-delivered letter from our coordinator letting them know when and where to show up. And then that feedback is going to be provided to the teacher about whether the student came, what they worked on there, what they're still struggling on. So we're giving them that after-school support, but in an incredibly structured nature. And we're actually going to synthesize that process into Saturday Learning Seminar in our two. So we'll still have our drop-ins. We're not going to cut that out. But for some of the students who may need math day after school, but like maybe an extra day, we can now hit them in both opportunities. Okay? With that, we're using MathSpace, which is already a tool you've purchased for us, but we're reworking how we use it to make sure the MathSpace activities we identify are aligned with those critical skills we talked about earlier. So when our students are referred and they need a little additional support and say maybe they stay with the teacher and they do the, the practice with them. But what we say about math, math is a sport. We need to keep practicing it over and over and over. So sometimes we need to go home and we need to kick that ball around the backyard a little bit. But for math is doing your, your multiplication facts. Right? So they can now engage in a math, in a, a MathSpace activity that is aligned with the specific skills that they are also practicing with the support teacher and within their class. We're just hitting them in multiple places with it. Right? And when we're doing that, we're building their math confidence. Right? And if students are more confident, are they more likely to show up to school and keep trying again? They definitely are. Okay? Science is our next area that we're going to look into. So science does not break down by subgroups in the accreditation report, so we are at an overall status, level-three status in science. We have also been consistently at that status for two years now. This is our second year at pretty much the same overall metric. But like I talked about with math, we break it down. Right? So science also has three tests that weigh into it. The majority of students take biology. We have a very high number of students who still take the Earth Science test and then a very small handful of students that in chemistry are still testing. So we're focusing our data majorly on biology and Earth Science. Our biology scores, if you break it down, actually went up. Okay? Our Earth Science scores, however, took a plummet. So when they are incorporated together, that's what left us at that kind of stasis level. So what we talked about at a school is, well, what were we doing in biology to make some movement? Right? And one of the things that they really, really committed to was that cycle that works, particularly moving on to that section on the data analysis and using that feedback from what we're looking at on the data to rebuild, revamp curriculum, come up with new activities. Okay? And they, they made gains. They saw gains with their students. They also very much leaned into the 5E model, which I know you've heard at many presentations before, that we are also very heavily utilizing in science. So we took some of our models with science and we're spreading them out. We actually have two co-chairs, co-department chairs in science to make sure that we have staff who can be in those CLTs when our administrator has to bounce back and forth, because they do happen at the same time because we have common planning, to make sure that the CLTs are maximizing the productivity that is happening in them. And we're employing those best practices in planning around the 5E model, looking at our data, utilizing our city assessments, our division assessments that we have, and utilizing that data to drive forward the rest of the instruction throughout the year. Okay? We also are putting a heavy focus on disciplinary literacy. So I actually have some fun manipulatives if anybody wants to look at them. Okay? We have some that we use in math and I have some with me that we use in science. But when we talk about literacy, so many people think it's just English-based, but it's very relevant in every subject. But it looks different in every subject. So in science, what literacy might look like is how to read a chart. Right? How to interpret data. How to look at this really cool model of the cell and like, understand what's this pointing to, what's that denoting? What are things like that? So they have created some anchor charts that the students can have at the tables with them. We purposely put, um, in math, I can at least say, in subgroups, so the students have to work together around them. They have a digital copy that they can access when they're at home and reference it. But it has, it's them sharing, looking at, did you see this? Start talking about versus, you know, every kid sitting there with their cellphone in their own, own world type model that we've seen before. So we're creating some scaffolds in the class to, again, give the students something to rely on versus just their understanding level when asked a question, when asked to explain something. Right? We're helping them dive through that literacy because one thing you might not know about the science exam, that was also a recent realignment of standards. But when our new one came out, last year was the first time the new standards were tested and it involves what are called cluster items now. And what those cluster items involves is that the students actually have to read something. They have to dissect information from it and they have to draw conclusions from it. Right? So we're falling back on that, both that reading literacy skill and that science literacy skill. And we need to make sure we're preparing the students for that as well. So we're making shifts in instruction so the students can practice that consistently in class and then they're not just, you know, hit with it when we get to the SOL. Okay? Chronic absenteeism, I know it's a slide everybody's been waiting for, isn't it? I know. It's every high school in America's favorite slide. Okay? So chronic absenteeism was at a level-three status, is still at a level-three status, and we will admit it took a decline from the prior year to this past year. So it increased. What we need to figure out is why. And what did my team do when we were working through our continuous improvement process? We looked at an incredible amount of data, so thank you guys very much for helping us dig all of that up. And we broke it down. Who are our students that are missing school most often? Okay? So what our data says, um, and first, let me quick round. I want to make sure everyone understands what chronic absenteeism is. Okay? So chronic absenteeism is any student who has missed 10% or more of the school year. Both excused and unexcused days count towards that. Suspensions count towards that. So there's a lot of factors that go into it. Right? And the reason is, is, does it ultimately matter from the academic component if the day was excused or unexcused? No. What matters is the students missed instruction. Right? They need access to make up what they missed when they were not there. Okay? I always tell the students when I'm trying to explain it to them, chronic absenteeism can sneak up on you. Right? Because 10% of the school year is about 18 days in a school year. It's about two days a month. Does two days a month sound scary? Like, no, any parent could justify my kids missing two days a month of school. Right? Okay? But when you can persistently do it, it adds up. And if you were chronically absent for every year, And if you were chronically absent for every year that you were in school, from kindergarten up through 12th grade, you have now missed almost an entire year of school. So you're out in the work world, competing with people who have a year more education from you, when all they did different was show up to school more often than you did, okay? And that's why it's so important, right? For them to be competitive, it is important for our students to be at school, and it's important for our students and our families to understand the importance of attending school, okay? So who are our students who are missing school? Our economically disadvantaged students and our students with disability are two highest levels of students who miss a lot of school, okay? An interesting one that you're not gonna see on the VDOE website is, we broke it down by grade level. Our seniors miss three times as much school as our freshmen. Twice as much as our sophomores and juniors. So there's something going on that senior year, right? That is now getting these students to attend school less than the other ones. But what's the first step of, you know, solving a problem is knowing what the problem is, right? One of the things we realized is, a lot of our seniors did have very heavily reduced schedules last year. Maybe only needed to show up to a class to get attendance that day. And when you only have to come for one class, right? Is it easier to skip than when you know you're gonna miss it for? So we talked earlier about, we have streamlined that process to significantly reduce the number of reduced schedules, okay? We also realize that if you're a senior and you're struggling, and you're at risk to be a dropout, and school's getting harder for you, is it easier to not show up than to face the mountain of tasks in front of you? Correct, right? So we really wanna get proactive in our monitoring. We wanna look for students with attendance patterns very early on. We wanna look for students with at-risk factors, if they're missing SOLs, very early on, right? We talked about that missing that Algebra I as a freshman. We're not waiting till those students are seniors to test them on their Algebra I and get their Math Verified credit when they might be testing on four other tests at the same time, and they're overwhelmed. We're trying to get it out of the way for them as sophomores. So when they're juniors, they can just move on to reading and writing, right? Helps build that better connection to school, helps them think school is more attainable, and helps them continue to show up to school. So with our tracking of that, we made note that we need more than one person to just stay on top of all of the students showing these patterns, right? So we have attendance officers, but we actually work with an interdisciplinary task force. So when our students are identified at different metrics of absenteeism, and I know you're gonna get a lot more on absenteeism right after me, so I'll try not to ruin the next presentation too much by giving it all away. But we will have, the teacher has a component when they're communicating with the student and the family. The next level is the teacher, or the, sorry, the counselor get involved. So once a student hits the next metric, our counselors have created a process to dive in with the students and not just say like, hey, you've been missing school, but really dive into that why. They look at socio-emotional factors, they look at academic factors, they look at family factors, okay? If we need to connect them to another type of support, if we need to get them with our social worker, because we don't know what's keeping them from going to school, we wanna build that connection sooner, okay? After that, it moves on to our deans, who are making sure the families are coming in. Our parents are involved in that conversation. They're sitting in the school having the conversations with us, so they know what supports we can provide at the school, right? And how the education can impact their students' future, and the importance of that being there. And then we are also utilizing our attendance officers. We have actually added a second attendance officer this year, and I'll tell you why that's important, especially when we talk about those seniors. Is, there's always an opportunity with, like, attendance, right? We tell kids, this is a law, you have to go to school, right? Just like can't have your cellphone, you have to go to school. They're actually better at the cellphone law, right, than the going to school law, but we're working on it. But sometimes our court system gets overloaded, right, just like at the school. So they want us to focus on our younger students with that. And the students who are getting close to 18, intake's probably not gonna take them in there and say that like, you know, court is a threat if you don't come to school. But by having an additional attendance officer, we can now have an attendance officer that specifically focuses on those senior students, right? And court may be not the route for them, but making sure they get connected to resources they need to have a thriving future. What are your goals? We're having those conversations. We're helping them understand how a high school diploma is gonna open up doors for them, and we have to figure out the path to get there. So we have that extra staff to do that for our very highly absent students, okay? We're also utilizing our tutoring programs. So we said, it's now by referral. We're assigning it like an administrative, I hate to say detention, I don't want the kids to have a negative connotation, but we assign it the same way, and we follow up with them if they don't attend. And then we're gonna require them to come in for a student support meeting with their family if they're not coming in, you know, taking the help. Like, I tell my kids, never say no when someone's offering help, right? Take all the help people will get in, will give you in life, okay? So we're utilizing that, because what's the most important thing? They missed the class time, right? They need the time back in class to build that understanding, so they're more confident to continue to attend class. And there is a bonus that sometimes the outside-of-school recovery time that they're willing to commit to us to get back on track academically, will help recover some of their attendance with the state as well. We're also looking at a reward system, because we can't just be reactive, right, to people who break the rule. We have plenty of kids at our student, okay? You know many of our amazing students that we have here, but a majority of our students at our school have positive attendance habits. And I use that data for the students who don't, to help them understand that your worldview of you and your friends engaging in behaviors is not representative of what the majority of people are doing. And guess what? These are the people that you're gonna compete against for a job in a couple of years. So many of our students with 40, you know, absences might be like, yeah, like everyone skips school. And what they don't realize is the three people they hang out with also do. But the other 2,000 kids at the school aren't doing that. And helping them realize it, so helping them see that kids are being recognized for having positive attendance, and giving them attainable goals if they have not met the recognition at first, to be able to use growth in that area to still be recognized for their positive growth, okay? All right, our graduation and completion index, we are at a level-one for this, and I would like to report highest that we have had for our graduation and completion index in the very recent future. So we are doing some incredible things at the school, okay? To make sure that our students do graduate, and they graduate on time. Some of the different things we utilize for that now. One thing that you may not know is that there is what schools are accredited on, and then there are expectations for students for graduation, okay? And there's a lot of crossover, but it's not apples to apples, right? Students to meet their personal graduation requirements sometimes have more flexibility than what schools have to meet their accreditation requirements. So students do have the opportunity to utilize substitute tests. Any student getting a standard diploma can have at least one verified credit, which means on their SOL of their choosing, they got a 375 or higher, not a 400, and they've taken it at least twice. And that still meets that student's expectation for graduation. Our students with disabilities can have multiple locally awarded verified credits, where they're meeting that 375. Now that doesn't meet the school's accreditation standard, but it does help that student attain their goals and their future, and make sure that they have the opportunity to get across that stage on time, okay? So there's still value in that, and that's a system that the state has set up for everyone in Virginia. So what we do offer is many opportunities. We talked about some of our SOL recovery classes, AFTA is one. We also have one in English. We also have an English class where students can take English 11 and 12 at the same time. So if they get behind in English, they have a chance to get caught up on it. We have expanded significantly access to the ACT Work Keys. If you're not familiar with that, it's a really neat test. It measures writing, just like the SOL does, but from a different lens. So it's a high level of rigor, but where the SOL is focused on persuasive writing, the Work Keys is focused on technical writing. And what we have found is many of our students associate better with an applicable type of writing that they could see themselves doing as part of a job one day versus a persuasive topic that they may or may not be passionate about, right? So we don't start with the Work Keys for students, but for students who have struggled on the SOL writing after two attempts, they get an opportunity to try the Work Keys, which does still count as a verified credit for them towards graduation, okay? We also have, the new Virginia system has set up the alternative assessments that can be used in social studies. And what that actually is, is a task that the student performs throughout the year. There's four tasks in the one class, three in the next, and then four in the USBA class. And the student has to pass a majority of them, so three out of four, two out of three, to get the verified credit for social studies. What those tasks do, we talked about them earlier. They look at documents, they do document analysis, and then they respond to prompts on them and are able to complete questions on it. But it's different than taking the test. However, if the students cannot meet the level utilizing the tasks, they still have the opportunity to take the SOL, okay? Now, our pool of students taking the social studies SOL at that point are only the students who have not met the requirement through the alternative. So that is gonna be a little bit smaller pool there. All right. In looking at our dropout rate, we definitely have areas that we need to focus very specifically on. So I wanna share some data with you regarding our dropout rate, okay? Of our students, who are 41 students who were dropouts last year, that was actually the same number of students as the prior year, was 41 and then 41. The denominator was slightly smaller, but they were very close, so that dropout rate stayed pretty consistent. 63% of the students were English language learners. Now to compare, 33% of our demographic is English language learners, okay? So that's not, that's not an appropriate breakdown, right? 15% were students with disabilities, while 11% of our demographic is students with disabilities. And 39% of our dropouts were enrolled in an alternative education program, and were not actually coming to our school building during the day, okay? So we know our areas that we need to focus on to support our dropouts. A significant one is helping our English language learners acquire the English literacy skills to be able to access all of the rest of their curriculum. So one thing we're doing is in preparing those students for that WEATA test that measures that literacy growth, we're familiarizing our teachers in all subject areas with what that measures. So math, do you have an opportunity? English, do you have an opportunity to provide the students tasks in class where they're practicing speaking tasks, writing tasks, similar to they would be doing on the access class, right? Just by helping our teachers understand, what is the rubric looking for? What skills are they looking for in that, okay? We do have an ESOL senior support team that is monitoring all of our senior ESOL students to make sure they are staying on track to meet their graduation requirements. And when one of them gets a little waiver, we throw, you know, everything but the kitchen sink at the student to make sure we're keeping them there and we're keeping them focused, okay? We have enhanced many of our in-house alternative education programs. We were able to add additional ESOL support to evening school, and we are about to get transportation for evening school, which is huge for these students, because if they are willing to come and recover credits in the evening, I do not want the barrier to be, I don't know how to safely get there, right? So I appreciate, Mr. Maciak's department has been huge in helping us get that set up, as has transportation with Central, okay? We also have, within the school day, flexible blended learning options, where students can recover prior courses that they have taken, and sometimes take a course ahead online at their own pace, which sometimes allows them to take more than one course throughout the year, but still with teacher support in the classroom that can help them when they hit a barrier and they need that to push them along. And we do have the student support team meeting process for all grade levels at our school. So when students hit specific metrics, attendance, achievement indicators, we will pull a student support meeting. We bring their dean, their counselor, their parents together, teacher feedback on there, to make sure we are connecting, again, students and families to early intervention supports they need to keep students on pace, okay? We have made it to our final accrediting factor for high schools. I'm sorry, we have a lot at the high school. So we're almost there. I appreciate you guys sticking with me on this one, okay? And I do wanna reinforce that our college career civic readiness indicator is almost at a level-one. It is like individual students away from being there. So we have seen huge growth with that, right? We are doing some really great things. But we've also made some shifts that sometimes will look a little weird in the data. Because when you're looking at your data, we have our accreditation report, okay? That will include the different areas that you can meet the college career and civic readiness indicator. So while all of the other accreditation areas are reliant on a specific test, right, or a specific metric, CCCRI, right, is actually a menu, okay? So there are a variety of ways students can meet this. The student only has to meet one of the areas, not all of them. And they can meet multiple areas, but they still only count for us once. So the idea is getting every student access to one item on the menu. On the menu, we have AP IB or dual enrollment courses that they've taken. We have CTE credential with a completer, so they take a level-one, level-two, and they get a credential opportunity. We have work-based learning opportunities that they complete. And there's service learning, and then JROTC with the completer, we're taking the multiple levels as an opportunity to get that, okay? So there's many ways that we can increase this, right? I will note, if you're not sure and you're looking at the School Quality Profile Indicator, there was a misreporting on the website of our AP enrollment. Those numbers are being updated on Friday, okay? So the updated numbers will be there. It was, it's very off. It's much lower than the students we actually have in advanced academic courses. So just like us, you know, like, we're human, sometimes people punch numbers in incorrectly there. So we are still continuing to double down on that with adding more opportunities for advanced academics. That not only meets CCCRI, right? That prepares students for college, because a lot of research shows if you have access to a college-level course in high school, you are more prepared when you are in college. So we have added additional sections this school year of dual enrollment, auto tech, and Teachers for Tomorrow, both classes students can get college credit from. And we are in the process this year of adding next year two new AP courses, which are considered access courses. So they're courses specifically designed by College Board to invite students who maybe have not taken an advanced academics course before. It's like an intro to advanced academics, but they're considered more accessible for students. So that's gonna going on, give more opportunities to get students who maybe haven't tried an advanced course in there to experience it and then build from there. We also have a really great professional learning cohort that we're doing in collaboration with the Advanced Academics Office, where not only our AP teachers, but our honors teachers who are on the pipeline to AP classes can collaborate together and make sure that they're synthesizing expectations and vertically aligning the structures in class to feed students in, so they're actually successful when they get to the higher-level course, all right? We also made sure that we are increasing our ESOL supports for our students who are in our CTE classes, so they can be successful in there too. We have increased number of co-taught with our ESOL instructor in there with it, CTE courses. We also have co-taught sections in our economics and personal finance classes for both our ESOL students and our students with disability. We were able to increase that to, again, make sure students are getting supports to meet that graduation requirement, okay? Additionally, we have incorporated teachers into our Saturday Learning Seminar who can support the students in specific CT areas, which there's literally one person in our building who can help support the students, because it's such a specialized area, all right? We did do some shifts, right, for some of where we're meeting that CCCRI. School Quality Profile will show some of the menu items, but doesn't necessarily report all of the menu items on the separate tab. I forget what it's called, but we'll get back to that one, right? So what we did is, we had students in the past taking the Workplace Readiness and WISE test as their credentialing test. But the problem is, those tests are not recognized in the industry as super valuable tests. So our kids are studying for them. They're checking a box to meet the CCCRI, but they leave our school, and it's not of value to them academically. So what we did is, we shifted, right? So instead of the students focusing on that in those classes, we expanded the amount of internships, externships, service learning opportunities, job shadowing opportunities, and school-based enterprise, which is my favorite, because our auto shop has not only changed my oil, put new tires on for me, but, you know, a Colgan kid rear-ended me one day, and now they're helping with that as well, right? But it's giving these students opportunities to actually apply skills they are gonna apply in the workforce while they're in the classes with us. And, bonus, it counts towards CCCRI, right? So we have made big shifts there. We're also going to add, I didn't mention it here, but we are gonna add some of the industry credentials this year in Microsoft as well, which will be a significant number of students that can take that also, okay? We had a lot. I very much appreciate your patience working with me. I know that was a lot to digest. I am happy to answer questions on any of it, if we have it there. And as always, you guys are always welcome to visit the school, see the great things that we have going on this year. It is a very good school year, I will say. I have very much enjoyed my time there so far, and I'm excited about the rest of what's to come this school year.
Questions or comments from the board, looking to my right, Mr. Hollingsworth.
I don't have a question, but I wanna say thank you for such an in-depth presentation. I love your out-of-box thinking as far as leveling consequences for specific behaviors. I think that the sweeps and things of that nature, retrain your line of thinking of your behavior and what you're set there to do. And your intention is to get them back in the classroom, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Brooks.
I also wanna thank you and really like how you're doing, you're very leveled.
I also want to thank you and really like how you're doing, you're very leveled and very like making sure the students know that this action and this behavior is going to affect you in this way, and so this is why you need to do it differently. And can I see the manipulatives, please? Can I see the manipulatives, please?
I just get talking and...
Yeah, that's okay.
And we also have these, getting those class views as well.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. Yes, and no, thank you, because that presentation was extremely in-depth and I truly appreciate it. My, now my, my mind goes to, how are you as the lead of Osborne High School going to manage all of this? So, so do you have or do you need additional support from Central Office to help you truly manage every aspect of all of your initiatives?
You know, it's working, right, it's working. So there was, there's, there is a normalizing time, right? There's, we've all gone through that change process and it's messy at first when we're, you know, melting the prior understanding, we're working together to figure out our new ones, and we're building capacity with people we have in our building. We have a lot of incredibly talented staff in the building. I've got a strong admin team, but you know what I really have is a strong teacher leader team, right? And I do have a lot of them here tonight and I appreciate them coming too. Because we have some teacher leaders that step up and are taking on, you know, initiatives. Mr. Fincham coordinates evening school. Ms. Bosie's not here, she's at home with her second grader, but she is like single-handedly coordinating with very little administrative support, these learning labs, and she's got better ideas than I had for it and stuff. So luckily, we do have a lot of staff, I do try to pay them, so that's, I appreciate, I literally very much appreciate the funding. It does help us be able to get these things done. The biggest area where we need support is for our students who are not in the building with us. And it is not our students who are absent, not in the building, but our students who are in our alternative education program, right? And very reasonably may not be in the building. But if we had access to an alternative education program for our students who are at-risk early students, where we could give them higher tier-three supports, but in person, right, to socio-emotional supports, to academic supports, to behavioral supports, we could prevent many of them from becoming those out-of-school alt-ed students. And if we had an opportunity, I mean, I know that's a huge, it was just a little ask, right, right? But happy to, you know, work together and brainstorm on ways that we can do it. We are trying to be creative in-house to figure out things we can do, very much appreciated we were able to get at least bilingual edmentum access for the students, so they now have access to it in their language, and that was a huge, right? That was a huge one, is making that accessible. But they're still our kids, right? And they're our kids who made a mistake and they need to be able to recover from that mistake. And I'm going to tell you, you guys didn't, weren't there for my interview panel, but those kids are my brother, those kids are my husband, right? And so I get them, I get what they need and I get that different kids develop at different levels and need different levels of support. And the more opportunities that we have to have systems available to provide that to students upfront is the, the better chance we get them to that higher future. My, my husband got his GED in jail, he was supposed to be an Osborne Park graduate, and he out-earns me by four thousand dollars. Want you to know that with my doctorate.
He doesn't let you forget that.
But he worked very hard and he recovered, so our kids can get there, right? Our kids can get there.
Yeah, I'm confident our kids can get there with the right, right, right foundation. I do want to point out, and I believe I forgot to point this out, in our last meeting when Metz, I believe it was, that presented, our EL learners do outperform the state across the board, except for history, that's it. Across the board, they do outperform the state. So I do have to shout out and make sure people are aware of that as well.
They are so incredibly hardworking.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, Mrs. Bresja.
So thank you very much, this is a, I'm excited for you to be here for your very first board presentation, you knocked it out of the park, thank you so much. This is, there's a lot in here, I took a lot of notes, and I do, I do still have questions for you, so we will, just some small things. So at the top, I really love each of the, you know, behavioral changes, the tardy sweep protocol sounded great to me. I'm very excited to see how that develops and how the school culture changes as a result.
If you guys want to guest star at a tardy sweep too, let me know, I can get you in.
But one thing that stuck out to me was the lunch detention, after-school detention, which I think is great. You know, you want kids to make up that time on their time and not on the instructional time, but do we still have in-school suspension?
We do still have in-school suspension, yes we do. So we do still have that, that is now a progressive discipline level that a student gets to. I have tried to work with my admin team to more normalize when a student is in a state at school where returning them to the classroom is going to be disruptive for all of the students, that's when that is a more appropriate support to go. When a student can return to class and continue to learn with their peers and serve their consequence at another time, that's when we want to utilize an outside of one. But I also get if a student is, you know, in an emotional state, they're in that, you know, amygdala hijack at that point and stuff, and we're trying to work with them, but their consequence also needs to be a place where they can have more of a one-on-one support, have a reflective conversation. Mr. Copeland, our supervisor of that, is phenomenal with the students, huge relationship builder, and helps working with them on building plans to improve so they don't get themselves to be repeats back in there. And making sure they're engaging in their academics. Some of those kids actually get more academic work done, like made up in there, when they're independently focused with him over their shoulder than sometimes they do in class when they're distracted.
Right, okay, I was just curious. So the schedule reduction process, I actually, I like, I like this, this makes a lot of sense to me. One thing that has been a problem at Osborne in years past is that kids who had reduced schedules had no place to go after, you know, they had no classes to go to and they had no transportation to wherever else they needed to go to, so they ended up in hallways or staircases, things like that. Do we have, do all kids who have reduced schedules, do they have confirmed transportation or are they now waiting in a library or something?
No, 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 so if they have a reduced schedule, right, they are leaving to go to a job. So as part of that process to apply for that, they have to either prove they have transportation or there is a small handful of students who are in our Career Strategies class who do not have a job outside of school and their work-based learning experience is at the school. So while they're still there during their period for that, they're productively working on a sign, an assigned area that they have been put in the school.
Gotcha.
Yep.
That sounds great. Moving on to the English, the accreditation indicator, the green for English. You used a term, a, you used an acronym I hadn't heard before, LLA? Or was, or was it...
I probably meant to say LAAs.
Oh, LAA.
The, so was I referencing the social studies test?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yeah.
So what does that mean?
So that is the locally alternative assessment.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So this is...
That's the one where they do the performance tasks in the class, which are graded in-house versus a test that gets sent to the state to grade.
Right, and this is why you were explaining later, our history score looks a little wonky because because more people are, more of our students are doing this process. I haven't heard it abbreviated before, so thank you for that. Let's see, the, let's see, I'm sorry, annotations, okay. So I had a question about the AFTA focus course for math, the bridge between Algebra I and Algebra II. So the idea is you've taken Algebra I and you've passed that class?
You've passed Algebra I, yes.
You've passed the class?
Because if you didn't pass Algebra I, you're back in Algebra I this year, yes.
And you've taken but failed the Algebra I SOL?
Correct.
And so now you are in AFTA?
AFTA fo, yeah.
Are you also in geometry or are you just in AFTA?
No, no, AFTA does count towards a math credit, towards graduation. There's a couple paths you can go to, so some students, the most common one is Algebra I, AFTA, geometry, Algebra II. You also could do Algebra I geometry, feel like you're not prepared for Algebra II yet, do AFTA to reinforce those skills and then move on to Algebra II, so those two actually can go in either order. But we normally wouldn't have students taking them at the same time, that would be your extenuating circumstance students.
Okay, so it is not intended to be taught, you're not enrolled in geometry and AFTA at the same time? You're bridging Algebra I and II, and maybe you don't ever take geometry in that case?
There are a small handful of students who that could happen with. Our students with disabilities who can get a math credit for graduation for both Algebra I Part I, Algebra I Part II, could take AFTA as their third credit for the standard diploma and then never take geometry. But a majority of our students would have their Algebra I, their AFTA, and then they would at least need the third credit in geometry.
Gotcha. So one additional question slash point I wanted to make when you were talking about the academic achievement gaps in English, one of the questions I sent you in advance of this was, this is mentioning a lot of language learner, English language learners, but they actually were fine in the, you know, they weren't, they weren't actually level three, so I appreciated your explanation there. But also just as an FYI out there to the public that our accreditation calculation for how our ELs are counting is changing
Correct.
Next, we have next year.
Yep.
So that is an important area of focus for, if, just to prepare for that change to take place. The, tell me, so I want to talk a little bit more about the learning labs. The learning labs count towards attendance recovery, so...
They could, yes, they could. For students who are chronically absent, if a student attends enough time in a learning lab, one visit, so our learning labs are only for an hour, they're until our late bus comes. So one visit to a learning lab is not going to recover the time a student needs to get the state-approved recovery time back. But students, our learning labs, I actually didn't show this because I focused on math, but we are doing them in the four core areas. So each day of the week is a different one, so students who need support in multiple subjects could get assigned to multiple ones. On top of it, we also have ESOL-specific two days a week, after-school review sessions that focus on English and math skills. So we've staggered our English and math learning lab to not be on those days. So if our ESOL students need to go to the ESOL learning lab, then math, you know, morning session, and then ESOL again, and then English, they can actually hit four in a week if they want.
And the instructors who are covering these learning labs, these are extra duties that they're...
They, yep, they're, I am paying for that, so, yeah.
I figured, but just checking.
Yep, yep.
The, and you, this is a referral process, which I, I like the concept of a referral process, what if kids don't show up?
So if they don't show up, we don't want to get punitive with them yet, but we don't want to ignore the fact that they didn't show up. So the next level step is having one of those student support meetings where their parent needs to come in, the student, the parent, and the team needs to work together. We need to find out why that was not an accessible option for the student, are there after-school things going on? Would Saturday be more appropriate? Or is there super extenuating circumstances where we need to provide this student supports in another manner? But making sure we get that conversation happening with home about your student needs support. And we'll be creative and flexible about how they get it, but we need you to partner with us to make sure that they are getting that support so they can be successful, yeah.
The, so on chronic absence, and I know we're getting a whole separate presentation very soon on that, but the high school is a little bit, you can be present for one class and absent for another class, and when do you count as absent for the day?
So if you are present for at least one class during the day, it does not count towards your chronic absenteeism total, right? We have other interventions we have at that point, because for students who are missing significant class times, we are still going to again have those student support meetings. We are still going to be requiring them to come to sessions to rebuild and stuff too, but they would not technically count towards a day towards their chronic absenteeism.
If they showed up to...
If they attend at least one class.
If they attend at least one class.
Yes.
And so the problem is, the, this is how the state measures it, this is how we report it, this is how we talk about it, but in some ways the problem is, can be a little bit bigger than what the number reflects. So that is, but we can talk about all of that a little bit more. The, all right, so now my, is it my last question? No, second to last question. The graduation completion index, so I'm, I understand that how we, the, the snapshot that we are judged on as schools is different from how students are judged as they work towards graduation. So a student can take an SOL as many times as they need to pass, earn that graduating credit and walk across the stage. But we, the school, only get the fir, is it the first time a student takes a test, the second time a student takes a test?
In the year that the student is first in the class and take the test, we get their highest score on that test. So if they're in Algebra I for the first time, they fail it, they qualify for a retake that year, but they pass it, they count as a pass. They fail it, they qualify for a retake that year, they fail it, they count as a fail. That's in that accreditation year. Now that student has the opportunity for them to take it again. If the student now passes the next calendar year, that counts towards the next calendar years of accreditation. It does not go back retroactively and be like, oh, 2003, you're going up a lot of points because now your kid's passed in 2004.
Right, okay, and there's two cycles a year.
Yep, there's a winter one, which is not as heavy, that's normally just for retaker testers, and then the writing and the regular tests are on slightly different schedules too. And then there's the large one in the spring, which is primarily for first-time test takers, but we also can give students opportunity to retake who need it for graduation, have passed the class, but have not passed the SOL yet.
Do you need to pass a class to take the SOL? If you fail a class, are you, if you fail Algebra I, do you take the Algebra I exam?
So we do not know they failed, we might be able to easily predict they're going to fail until after the SOL testing window, so if they're enrolled in the class, they're sitting for the SOL.
So that's what the threshold is, you're enrolled in the class?
Now, if they fail Algebra I, they can't retake Algebra I in the December window the next year because they haven't passed the class yet. They would take Algebra I in the normal spring testing window that the students enrolled in the class would take it.
So this is leading me to, this doesn't diminish at all, the kids are graduating at a ninety-point-two percent rate like that, that's awesome. It does sound that we still have some work to do though, in terms of making sure that those kids are taking on their instruction and passing those tests the first time, that's what that...
Because the, every first-time test passer is less time that student is pulled out of their later focuses to prepare to redo something. So I agree, getting in the first time is always going to be what our goal is.
Right, that's what, yes, easier on everyone. The, so I just wanted to follow up briefly on the CCCRI. You explained the Workplace Readiness Test, and when I saw the school quality profile come out and I saw the numbers, the, some really drastic declines in there, I knew that it was not because our CTE administrators went out to lunch. I knew it was because of something like this, that there was a shift in what the kids were doing. It would be great if the state would report that, so it doesn't like look so incomplete on the public website, but that is what it is. You explained the Workplace Readiness, that it was a test that was a certification that's not really valuable outside of work, so much better to give kids a school-based enterprise or a high-quality workplace, you know, based experience or something like that. But the industry certifications, you didn't talk about industry certifications.
Correct, so we do still do the industry certifications and those we find very valuable for the kids. Because quite frankly, there are things that if a student was waiting to do post-high school, they're paying very high number amounts of money to do it. And also need to be in a training course to prepare for it. So we do still have the industry certifications, and that's when I had also shared, we are trying, I actually didn't include it in there, but we're trying to expand the number of industry certifications this year that we'll be offering too. So we have, you know, with our CNA, we have with our Cosmo program, our auto tech. I actually have, it's very large, and I know there's other people who've talked to, but a paper in here who's got the... We actually have this many different types of industry certifications, right, that we... Those watching at home, right? So there's a lot that we have opt, we have a very extensive CTE program in the area, but we can still expand those also, so we were actually, Ms. Taylor and I were talking this morning about areas we have to expand. That Microsoft one is a huge one, we can bring in, very accessible to students, very applicable in the workforce, right? So we are, this year we have plans on bringing that in as well.
So that number did, but that number did have a decline from last year to the year before. So that was more, that was also just a shift of more people choosing to do different things like workplace learning and stuff like that.
Yep.
But we're still...
We're still offering those, yes, yes.
We're still offering it and we're working on even more, okay. So, and a point, what did you say, half a point, half a percentage point?
It was one and a half, one and a half.
One and a half percentage points, that's...
One point five one, but not that, I'm counting.
Well, next October, I look forward to the green indicator, so, thank you, that's all from me.
Thank you, Mrs. Bresja, Mrs. Fall, do you have any other questions to ask?
No, I just want to say thank you for taking on this task. It's a gigantic task and I do have a page and a half of highlights, you know, from having been a mom at Osborne for ten years. A lot of things look really great, and I'll leave it at that, but thank you very much. And you know what, I've been asking what we can do to help you, and I think that question's been asked and answered, but I want you to know that we are here for you.
Appreciate that.
And we have every confidence that you're going to succeed.
And very much have felt that since the first day I started.
Thank you.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, just to let you know, I was taking notes and I was also taking notes on my phone to take back to my job because some of those ideas are really applicable in middle school as well as high school. And I also really appreciate the trapper keeper you're using. That's really a fashion statement, love it. And I have to say especially... And I have to say especially, I appreciate that you've broken down the dropout rate numbers. And when we look at those Alt Ed numbers, you know, that is something we're really trying to get into our school division, is to keep those kids with us. Because we know that when they're with us, their chance of success is much higher. So I'm just warning you, you're probably going to get an email from me to talk to some legislators about pushing for funding for Alt Ed in our school division.
I'll bring the Trapper Keeper.
Okay, good, because I figured you would. I figured you would, but yeah, that got me really excited, and, because that's something we as a board really want to see. And we're trying to figure out how it can get done, because our kids need to stay with us. And it's not just the kids who could no longer be in our buildings, it's those kids who are really high-risk. They've got one foot out the door, and we need to get both feet back in the door, because once we lose them, they're gone. So, thank you for that, love the Trapper Keeper.
I think you got the message now that we do hear you. And I just want to thank you, and I know that you'll be presenting to City Council on Monday at their meeting, not quite as long a presentation.
Much briefer.
And we look forward to that, and we look forward to supporting you throughout the rest of the year and, and forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next up on accountability, an attendance update. Dr. Jennifer Casada, Executive Director of Accountability and Finance, and Dr. Mandy Zayats, Supervisor of Student Data Reporting and Attendance Management, will provide an update on MCPS attendance data and processes. Thank you, welcome.
All right, good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, School Board members, and Dr. Newman. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss attendance with you tonight with a focus on the MCPS processes and procedures. For the 2024-25 school year, we did some reorganizing related to attendance. Dr. Mandy Zayats, Supervisor of Student Data Reporting and Attendance Management, who is on my team, now oversees the attendance officers. She works in partnership with the Director of School Leadership and Principals to support efforts around combating absenteeism. A chart with chronic absenteeism rates for 2223 and 2324 for all schools is included in this presentation. It's the same data that we shared in our September update, it's just in a different format. As has been the practice in the past, monthly updates to the school board will include year-to-date data with examining patterns of potentially chronic absenteeism, beginning with the October update. Now that numbers have stabilized, August and September, there's a lot of turnover and lots of, who the denominator is is really tricky, so that's why you didn't get it in September. In recent school updates, you've heard about the efforts in several of our schools, most notably this evening, to address absenteeism with students and families. Tonight, Dr. Zayats will provide some background information around attendance with a focus on chronic absenteeism, along with the rules of key stakeholders. She'll walk you through the MCPS attendance protocol, expectations, and discuss some next steps. It is my pleasure to turn the presentation over to Dr. Zayats.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, School Board members, and Dr. Newman. My name is Dr. Mandy Zayats, and I'm eager to share with you information about our Division Attendance Management this evening. For this introductory presentation, I will begin with attendance definitions and importance. I'll move into the key roles of our partners, then share our division focus on reducing chronic absenteeism via our Manassas City Public Schools Attendance Protocol, and I will address our attendance needs for school year 2425. I would first like to share the importance of good attendance as connected to our strategic plan. Our strategic plan, I'm sorry, it did not go, oh, it did not go, thank you. Our strategic plan connects academic success to strong family and community partnerships that create a culture of caring and yields an inclusive and collaborative learning environment that students and families want to be part of. These support good attendance. Our key indicators of improved attendance and students' academic success, as indicated in our strategic plan, are continued reduction in chronic absenteeism rates and also continued reduction in dropout rates. Attendance is not just an increased division focus, it's also garnered increased focus across the Commonwealth. Because chronic absenteeism is correlated to lower academic achievement, it's a predictor of dropout rates, and it's been linked to poor outcomes for our students later in life. For more information, you will notice a VDOE link at the bottom of this slide, in which you will find the VDOE definition of chronic absenteeism, as well as more information. To continue to move the needle forward for improved attendance, it's important that we all work together within a division to address our multifaceted attendance needs. All students are our students, and all attendance matters. Here I've noted the predominant roles of partners within our division that directly support attendance indicators and improvement of chronic absenteeism. You will see later in the presentation that there are many other roles that support improved attendance, such as our family liaisons, that may not be listed here on this slide. The most important component of attendance or improved attendance is the accurate and timely reporting of daily attendance each day in the elementary and intermediate levels, and in every class, every day, in that middle and high school levels by our teachers. Similarly, it's critical that our administrative associates code attendance, reconcile daily attendance, and include comments where appropriate when our parents are guardians, report absences, and also when teachers report communications that they have made with families. Our school counselors have a crucial support role as well, providing outreach to students and their families when teachers share necessary, or when attendance does not improve. Our school counselors are also at the forefront for identifying attendance barriers and creating attendance plans collaboratively with students and their parents and guardians. Our administrative teams in the buildings lead their school teams in alignment with our MCPS attendance protocol and lead regular attendance meetings in their buildings. The purpose of the school attendance meetings are to analyze student and school-level data and subsequently, subsequently implement attendance priorities and strategies to establish a school and student attendance plan. The participants in the meeting are typically the administrative team or an administrative lead of attendance, the school social worker, the school counselors or the counselor in lead of attendance for the school, the attendance officer or officers, the administrative associate lead of attendance, and can include teachers and other staff that have deemed pertinent to support the students' needs. Another critical role in our attendance protocol are our attendance officers. Our division attendance officers work with students and families that are approaching truancy or are considered truant, and support our building leadership and partners that experience hardship in making contact with families regarding attendance. Or in situations in which families are not taking an active part in attendance meetings or planned recreation that is dependent on collaboration. Finally, it's my role to oversee our attendance officers, to develop and maintain our division processes, to support our school attendance teams, to analyze and report attendance data. Another important component to my role this year particularly is to find trends in our data, to continue focused conversations and specific support to buildings, as identified by their teams, and continue to hone our process to directly impact our division's attendance needs. So all absences matter, but it is important that we understand and address specific attendance needs that we apply the appropriate and applicable resources or interventions. So there's two ways of looking at attendance. The first is truancy focus. Truancy includes absences that are unexcused or unverified, often without parent or guardian contact, or it's a student's refusal to attend classes or attend school. These types of absences can become those that could be addressed by court involvement, so the interventions are more compliance-focused. The second lens is a chronic focus, and this focus looks at all absences, there are excused, unexcused, or even suspensions. These are those absences where we typically do have family connection, and we know where the students are, but they're not participating in instruction. These two lenses have distinct focal points, and while the chronic lens is the overarching concept of absenteeism, that includes all absent types, the truant one is a subset of all absences that result from a lack of compliance. Our division focus is on chronic absenteeism. All absences matter. We focus on all absences, students that are chronically absent, we focus on interventions and resource focal points that are addressing specific barriers to improved attendance, and sometimes significant amount of missed instruction time. Now, earlier this fall, this school year, Dr. Casada presented our MCPS chronic absenteeism rates by school, where she compared school year 2223 to school year 2324, and showed significant drop in chronic absenteeism in almost all schools. Strong efforts must continue, as significant numbers of students were still chronically absent. You just heard from Dr. Chapman about strategies and interventions in place at Osborne to help combat chronic absenteeism, as you've heard from several other schools in prior meetings about their strategies and interventions to reduce chronic absenteeism. The work continues. It's important for us to define what we mean by chronically absent. The state and the federal government define chronic absenteeism as when students miss ten percent or more of the membership days. So over the course of a full school year, which is typically one hundred and eighty days, this would equate to eighteen days. As mentioned earlier, this includes all absences, whether they are excused or unexcused. Chronic absenteeism calculations look at daily attendance only. At the early grades, daily attendance is taken in homeroom. At the secondary level, attendance is taken in each class. Daily attendance is reconciled for any student who missed part of a day, so this means if a student comes in late to school or leaves early, they are still counted as present for the day. School leaders monitor absenteeism data through data reports within our school, our student management system, and attendance meetings that occur regularly. I too analyze absentee data on a monthly basis and discuss with principals and also our Director of Leadership findings and trends. So there's two ways to address absenteeism, before it happens and after it happens, to prevent further absences. It's our goal to be as proactive as possible, to facilitate improved attendance by educating students and families about the importance of being in school and present for instruction and good attendance. By providing various manners of students' incentives for perfect or improved attendance, and working diligently as a school team to identify barriers of attendance early, so interventions and resources are employed ahead of the crucial need and significant loss of instruction time. Despite our best efforts, we do find ourselves reacting to attendance needs at times. Our efforts to improve attendance in these cases is by consistent use of our Division Attendance Protocol, in every building, every day. Our protocol relies on relationships and connections between schools and families, identifying attendance barriers, and developing appropriate interventions and resources for attendance improvement. And when necessary, applying truancy interventions in situations in which compliant is not taking place, and families may exhibit unresponsive behavior despite exhaustive efforts to provide support by the school and our partners. I would like to take time now to should, should, to share, is the word I'm trying to get out, our division protocol for attendance management. So our attendance protocol for this year does remain consistent from last year. This year, we're focusing on consistent implementation of the protocol across all buildings. In the next several slides, I will discuss each step of our MCPS Attendance Protocol and include specific details of each step. I do want to note here that in conjunction with our Attendance Protocol, we do have an automated calling system for all schools that alert families at the elementary levels, intermediate levels, when their student is absent for the day, and for families of secondary students, when class periods are missed, and if a student misses an entire day. All right, so let's begin with students that have recorded three to four absences. Our teachers are our first partner in our Attendance Protocol to facilitate a personal forward approach with our students and families. Our teachers make a personal phone call home to connect with a family once their child records three to four absences, to share that the student is missed when not in school. These phone calls are meant to build on the personal connection that students and families already have with their teacher or teachers, and allows an opportunity for a family to request additional support or resources and have that conversation. Now, once a call is made, teachers document the phone call as an attendance log entry in Power School in our student database and management, and will reach out to their administrative or counseling team in instances where appropriate to facilitate provision of resources and interventions that may have been discussed, to alleviate barriers to improved attendance that may have been identified in the call. Our next year, our students have reached five recorded absences. Now, once a student hits five absences, the school counselor will reach out to the family to address the importance of attendance and being present for instructional time. An attendance plan is created by the student, the parent or guardian, and the school counselor. The attendance plan includes the identification of barriers the student is experiencing and affects their attendance to determine if additional resources are needed to improve their attendance. The plan is a fully collaborative process that necessitates the involvement of all stakeholders. Another role that we utilize at this stage or even prior is our family liaison. Our family liaisons assist with effective home-to-school engagement and connecting families to various community health and human services. Therefore, not, though not directly responsible for attendance, our family liaisons can be a crucial additional partner to facilitate the identification of attendance barriers, and to lend their expertise of appropriate family resources to reduce barriers to improve attendance, as often family liaisons may already have a relationship with a student, the family, and can cultivate an improved personal connection and engagement. Family liaisons are often also involved in the proactive outreach and parent education for all families. Our family liaisons at each school help connect parents and families to resources needed to further our students' academic and social success, and they may participate not only in this meeting but meetings to come. The attendance plan and meeting are documented in our student database, and an MCPS attendance letter is also sent home as an additional notification of the absences. Additionally, the student is placed on a care list for an accelerated monitoring. Accelerated monitoring means that the teachers, the counselors, and other partners within the school and the intervention processes are expressly aware that a student is on the care list at this point in the absentee process. So they record, they're, they're going to be aware of if an additional unexcused absence takes place past this moment, we may need to reach out to that family student for additional resources or an additional take on our interventions. So students with accelerated monitoring are also those students that are being discussed in those regular attendance meetings at each building. So now we come to our seventh absence, recorded unexcused absence, and once a student hits seven absences for the year, now we have a formal student support team that's created to support the students' attendance improvement. The team consists of a student, of course, the parent, guardian, the counselor, the teachers, we're building on the team, administrator and administrator designee, and our attendance officer is now coming into, into the fold. The student support team will meet with the student and the parent and guardian to revisit the attendance plan created prior at absence five with the counselor, and they'll update the plan with additional interventions and supports to improve attendance. The meeting will typically also address any academic, behavioral, or other barriers to improved attendance. The meeting is documented in our student management system, and an attendance letter is also sent home at this point to notify and document the seventh absence. And now we get to the tenth absence. So once a student records ten absences, the attendance officer is expressly involved with selected school staff as a continuation of prior inventions, interventions, excuse me, and developed plans. Because a student is now at a higher possibility of becoming truant, the attendance officer, already becoming part of the process and aware of the student prior, becomes the lead partner to address with the student and family the importance of compliance with the compulsory attendance laws, and also the attendance officer at this time may share with the family a potential court intervention should attendance not improve. At this point in the protocol process, a truancy meeting is held with the student and the parent and guardian. The meeting will include the student support team, and it's documented in the student management system once again, and also a Manassas City Public Schools attendance letter will be sent home to document the notification of the tenth absence. The last step of our Manassas City Public Schools Attendance Protocol is the twelfth recorded absence. Once a student records twelve or more unexcused absences, via prior documentation to include the log entries of attendance, phone calls, the attendance plan that was created, the updated attendance plan and interventions that were created following, and the partnership with the student support team, the student, the family, the attendance officer, will make a decision of how do we proceed at this point. The attendance officer begins expressly as a lead now, we have entered into potential truant waters. At this point, the school has exhausted its efforts to provide support and intervention to improve in student attendance. All efforts will be appropriately documented through those all log entries and attendance plans and so forth, in consistent locations, so the attendance officer can create their student file. the attendance officer can create their student file. Though it's never the intention and it's never the go-to for the attendance officer to seek court intervention, the attendance officer does file a case in situations in which the attendance compliance is not taking place, and in which the student or the parent or guardian are unresponsive to outreach. Typically, the attendance officer will seek inter-agency intervention as, such as a petition for a child in need of services or supervision and/or supervision petitions, as a legal recourse to provide schools, parents, social services, and their families a service need to address that school truancy, and to provide further interventions and resources to the family. Our attendance officers in our division work closely with the Department of Social Services, or DSS, as well as other local agencies and even other school divisions we collaborate with, to thoroughly exhaust all efforts and partnerships to support the student and the family with improved attendance before we move to more serious petitions or court intervention. So what's next? My focus for this first year in this role is to work on enhancing consistency across the division. This starts by reviewing and potentially revising attendance regulations and policies. We will be convening an attendance steering committee with representatives from every school to do this work collaboratively. Any policy recommendations would of course come to you first, the school board, for approval and for recommended changes to the regulate, um, school or any recommended changes, I'm sorry, to the regulations. Those would be shared as well to the school board. The goal is to make the policies and regulations clear and understandable to both our staff and our families and students. Another step is to work on enhancing consistency across school buildings when it comes to recording of absence types, and practices around what constitutes an excused or an unexcused absence. I will work collaboratively, collaboratively with schools and attendance teams to analyze different types of absences, be excused or unexcused, so that appropriate interventions can be developed and deployed with students and families. We're also planning to update the MCPS attendance letters, so that they will be more family-friendly and informative. Input from attendance officers and school attendance teams will be gathered to inform these changes. Thank you for the opportunity for me to present to you for the first time. I look forward to many more opportunities as we move forward and continue our work.
Thank you, Dr. Ziyad, and I will go to my school board members for questions. No, Mrs. Brooks, anything?
Thank you for breaking that down to, to the level that, you know, makes it clear to others and all the work, and welcome, and great job. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I just want to say welcome. Great presentation. Thank you. I appreciate all your hard work. I don't have any questions.
Mrs. Breja.
Hello.
Hello.
Very good presentation. I do still have questions, so.
Thank you.
Let's, uh, let's, let's go into it. Let's see. Go to my first little flag here. All right, so the fifth absence, let's talk about the fifth absence for a moment. An attendance plan is created to improve attendance. And now this is a personally relevant situation for me because my daughter just recovered from a pretty serious illness and just recently logged her fifth absence. So we're, are we talking, I feel, you know, how, so that my concern is that if we're creating an attendance plan for every kid who's gotten pneumonia, that's going to be a lot of meetings. So that's what my concern is. Are we, is it an automatic threshold for everyone who's hit a fifth absence, or is there a difference between excused, unexcused, if a doctor's note comes in or if it doesn't?
This is really an unexcused area because we're, we're trying to identify what are the barriers to good attendance. So really at the fifth absence mark, we're looking more at the unexcused. We can look excused later as we get to tenth absences, twelve absences.
Because it does still count.
Yes, ma'am.
It does still count, right. So, but sometimes it happens that you just get very sick and you have to.
My child is one, too.
Yeah, right. Like sometimes that just happens, and I don't want our school staff scrambling, trying to put attendance plans together for kids.
I'm putting more undue stress on our families that have just dealt with an illness like in this case.
Right, yes.
Absolutely.
And I'm very excited to see what the new attendance letter is going to say because it is a little incomprehensible, I think, to families right now, what exactly it's trying to say. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that process unfolds, and that all sounds very good to me. The, um, so as we were, as you were talking, you were talking about analyzing barriers, obviously in individual circumstances, but do we have any meta-analysis, if you will, of what the common barriers are? Because I'm curious about that, because that's something that we as a school board are possibly in conjunction with, in partnership with the city or partnership with our legislators, might be able to come, you know, come up with something if it's, you know, if transportation's the big barrier, for example. So do we do any of that analysis? Is that in the works?
I'm smiling because I love that question. So Dr. Casada is like, oh, she's, she's really excited about this one. I too am very interested. Our schools are very interested in what are the overarching barriers. I have started that analysis. It's in its infancy because my position in this is in its infancy, but we have identified some trends that are beginning to show. But that being said, we also are working on analyzing the data that we have to make sure that is good input of data to get good outcome of, of what the data's telling us, right? So really looking at where does chronic absenteeism lie versus truant absenteeism, and then what are the, then barriers to having improved attendance from those two gates, right? So that work is happening. I would say it's in its infancy, though, as we, we have data coming in for the school year.
All right, that's great.
So I'm very excited to share that later.
Okay, I am, I'll, I'll be very excited to hear it once the work is completed because that is something where if we can make it easier for large groups of kids to go to school, then that makes, I mean, obviously, we want to do that.
Yeah, and I will say that's at division level, right, but I will say that every day our buildings are working on what are their targeted barriers to attendance improvement, and they are working already this year, and they have been working for the last month and a half to address those barriers, school-specific. But I'm like you, I want to see the, the meta for the division as well. So that's coming.
Yes, okay, that's great. I cannot wait to, I cannot wait to see the results of that. So let's talk about absence recovery. Dr. Chapman talked a little bit about that. The state has made it possible for us to, for students to basically erase a day of absence if they come to certain targeted, you know, specialized, you know, makeup instructional time, for example, on a Saturday or after school. So do we know how many kids took advantage of that opportunity?
So I wish that there was a simple answer to that. So the primary purpose of students participating in those after-school instructional programs or Saturday learning seminars is to receive content instruction from a certified teacher in order to recoup lost instructional time. Students who recoup that lost instructional time in those programs that meet defined criteria, right, with a, with a content certified teacher, they have to have certain amounts of time. It has to be engaging and match up with the content that they missed. You heard Dr. Chapman talk about those kids are referred for specific things. If they do all of that and they attend enough, they can have their absence totals adjusted for chronic absenteeism calculations only. We do not erase absences and in fact still report students' total absences to the state. So if a student misses twenty-five days, we report twenty-five days. The only thing that happens is if they've attended twelve hours of this qualifying time, right, then they can have a certain number of days reduced in terms of, so if they fall over the threshold and then with those reductions, they fall under the threshold, they may not count for us in chronic absenteeism. We did not have tons of students that qualified for that, particularly you're interested in the high school. It was not very many students at the high school. Remember, I said those programs had to meet those defined criteria. But this year, after, the after-school tutoring and Saturday learning seminars that Dr. Chapman described are going to meet those criteria, and as a result, more students are going to benefit. So we had handfuls of students at some of our lower grade-level schools, but at the high school, we didn't have many because the nature of the programs didn't meet the criteria in order to have that benefit.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I know, I know, I knew I was going to kind of butcher that as it came out, so I'm thankful for you.
Well, not bad.
But I knew that opportunity existed, and I wanted to get a, a sense of the scale of its impact. And I do like the chance, obviously, the most important thing is for kids to get the instruction one way or another. I do, and I think all of us share that priority, that in class the first time is the much better and easier way to do it. So I'm excited to see where this process goes. My overall question, when I was looking at the, you know, Osborne had a divergence relative to the rest of the system, Mets improved a lot, but still had a pretty high overall level. My question looking at that was, well, is this a process problem or is this a, an implementa, an implementation problem? And it sounded like the conclusion that it was developed over your analysis as our hard-working staff members was this was more of a consistent application issue, and that we do expect success, taking a renewed focus on this, adding that additional attendance officer, and we should expect to see good results.
I absolutely expect it. We have a great working team. I'm working with both, both those schools, as well as all schools, very closely. As a matter of fact, I just met with Dr. Chapman yesterday afternoon, discussed these things. But not only did we add an attendance officer at Osborne full-time, we also added a halftime at Mets, and he is rocking and rolling and just doing a great job immersing into the team.
That's right. I forgot about him. So thank you. Good, yes, thank you. So that's all the questions I have. I can't wait until this time next year where we get our new update, hopefully reporting on the success of all this.
Thank you, Mrs. Breja. Mrs. Spall?
Yes, I just want to say I feel for you and your teams, you know, how painful it is to just keep going through this, add days on, you know, and in some instances, not have any resolution. So I thank you for taking on this task, and, you know, it looks to me like you have every, every opportunity to be hugely successful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Thank you for the presentation. What I appreciate most is the protocol. It's very clear and well-defined, and roles are, are clearly defined as well, because I think sometimes that's where the issue comes in, is people don't have clearly defined roles, and so no one within the building knows what they need to do to support that student. And so that student in some ways might end up falling through the cracks. So having this very clear protocol, I think, is, will really support us. And I also really appreciate the steering committee, and I see that it's going to come to the policy committee at some point.
At some point.
So I look forward to seeing that and to seeing how we may need to revise, update, edit our current policies to best suit the needs of our students. So thank you, and thank you for the thorough presentation.
Thank you. I will thank you as well. And you have a very important job, and we're all focused on it. We're all concerned about it. And what I liked about the presentation tonight is it really spells out the efforts that we're doing in Manassas City Public Schools, because a lot of people don't see that. And when they don't see it, sometimes they say you're not doing anything about it. So we are definitely doing something about it.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I think next on our agenda, we have Mr. Taft Kelly, and that should go pretty quick. And then I think I will go directly to, I may let our student reps do their reports before they go. It's getting late. We want to make sure that you get a good night's sleep so you're ready for school tomorrow, and I'm sure you probably have some studying to do before you go to bed, so. Dr. Casada.
All right.
Yes.
Hello again. Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, school board members, and Dr. Newman. Tonight, Taft Kelly, our Director of Finance, will be presenting to you the proposed capital improvement plan for the next five years. The presentation will provide some context about what is included in a CIP, along with details about key projects and future considerations. In order for MCPS to achieve the goals of our strategic plan, all components of our organization must work together as aligned foundational supports. Investments in infrastructure, whether in the form of a new building, enhancements to an existing building, or technology, are critical to providing the learning environment and culture necessary to support student academic success. It is now my pleasure to turn the presentation over to Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, Dr. Newman. It's been a long night, and I'm sure you all are a little exhausted. So I'll try my best to get through this as quickly as possible. I'm going to go over some highlights of the 2026 through 2030 CIP, or Capital Improvement Plan, which I will refer to throughout this presentation as the CIP. I just want to avoid some tongue-twisters, if you will. And so I want to first start by introducing, or giving a brief explanation of what the CIP, the purpose of the CIP, and, and what it means to the school division, and describe some of the activities that are typically included in the CIP, as well as some activities that typically are not included in the CIP. So first, I'm going to start with the purpose. And so the purpose of the CIP, there are several purposes. I'm going to talk about a few here today. Strategic, strategic planning. Strategic planning is extremely important, obviously, to the capital improvement plan, as well as the operating budget, which we'll discuss at a later date, I'm sure, and have tons of topics about that. But as far as the strategic plan goes, it outlines the long-term vision for the infrastructure and facilities, and helps us align the projects with our community goals. Also want to talk about budgeting. It's self-explanatory. If we put the plan together, it's going to help us put together a good budget plan and make sure we have the funding that's in place to allocate resources appropriately. We also want to talk about communication. The CIP plan is a communication tool. It helps us communicate our plan to our citizens and, and to the board, and lets everybody understand what we're going to be working on for the next several years and the benefits that come along with those projects. And then finally, what's most important to me is accountability. And so the establishing of CIP promotes transparency and accountability in public funds, and it gives our, it gives our end-users, it gives our citizens confidence that we're actually spending the funds accordingly. And so what's normally included in a CIP? Typically, new construction. Everybody knows the new Dean building would be a good example of that. That's going to be an item that's included in our CIP. Renovations of existing facilities, that one's a little more tricky because a renovation, there's levels to renovations. There's painting the wall, and there's also adding new, new classrooms, which build capacity in school divisions. So the way I like to define it, if it's going to be included in the CIP, it's got to be adding value to the building or extending the useful life of that building. And so that's typically when we would include that there. Infrastructure improvements, that's going to be things such as HVAC renovations or adding new systems to improve our air quality, as well as enhancing electrical systems to support new technologies, and then safety and security enhancements, installing new security cameras and upgrading fire alarms. What's typically not included in a CIP is going to be operational expenses. These are going to be normal, normal things that go in the budget process, regular maintenance, supplies, personnel calls, things that just typically would not be included in a CIP plan. Routine maintenance, that's kind of going back to the renovations of existing facilities, routine maintenance such as painting the wall or minor repairs to keep the facility up to date, but they don't really extend the life of the building at all. They just, they just kind of help the building look a little better for the folks that are in there. Those are things that will be included in routine maintenance. And then finally, we have non, non-infrastructure-related activities, which are programs or activities that do not directly involve physical improvements, such as training sessions, workshops, things of that nature. Obviously, that would not be included in the capital improvement plan. And so, speaking about new construction, let's, let's jump into some of the projects that are going to be included in this plan. First and foremost, our largest project of FY26 and probably for the next several years is going to be the new Jenny Dean Elementary School. As you all know, we are currently in the process of bidding out the new Dean project. The invitation to bid, or the ITB, is posted, and is scheduled to close tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. And so we're excited to see how the bids come in and see how those things are going. I'm sure you're all kind of chomping at the bit for that information. The city is currently preparing to sell the bonds, which will primarily fund the project. And bar any setbacks, we anticipate construction for this project beginning in January of 2025, with anticipated opening of the building in fall of 2026, which would be the 2026, 2027 school year. Just so you all know and can imagine, this is a multi-year project, so the expenses we anticipate are going to roll over into various years. We will roll the budget along with that to support those expenditures. And then the CIP also includes funding to address the old Dean infrastructure. And so there is funding there right now. It is obviously an estimate, and if things change with that infrastructure, we obviously will need to re, revisit that, that estimate to see if it's going to support whatever our goals are. The Osborne project, or Osborne High School projects, so currently, right now, at Osborne High School, there is a connector project that you may or may not be aware of. We are currently connecting two buildings at Osborne that used to be a covered walkway, or still is currently a covered walkway, that we will be enclosing and doing infrastructure to that. That project has begun. We have got the design in place right now, but the actual construction has not taken place. I believe that's going to start later on this year, and that project will likely roll into FY26 as well. The OHS roof replacement, that project has been a multi-year project, which started, I believe, in 2024, and is slated to be finished in 2026. The reason why this project has went multiple years is because that work is primarily done over the summer to avoid and to ensure safety with the students and make sure we're not having any interaction there. Window and door replacements are going to take place, as well as at Osborne High School, the concession stand and refurbishment, replacement. I have not been to an Osborne High School game. I'm sorry, I have not been there yet. I will make it to one. But I have heard that the, the concession stand does need some work, so I'm happy to see that that did make the list this year. And then some additional turf fields at Osborne High School as well. Mets Middle School projects, there's going to be some restroom refurbishment going on. There's going to be window and door replacement activities that are going to take place, scoreboard and bleachers, as well as more turf field installations at Mets Middle School. Technology investments. So every year, we obviously invest quite a bit into our technology. So every year, we obviously invest quite a bit into our technology infrastructure. We have what we call division-wide projects, as well as school-based projects. From a division-wide perspective, we will be doing network and telecom cabling, firewall filtering and system replacement, and data center server replacement. Some school-specific projects would be wireless access points, network switches, as well as interactive projectors or displays. And just so you all know, I sat with the technology folks, they have a phenomenal plan that they've been working on for years, to help implement these things on a rotating basis, to make sure our kids and our technology need to be met at all the schools, and it is absolutely phenomenal. I'm so happy to be working with those folks right now. And so what you see here is a schedule of those projects that we just discussed, as well as the expenditures and the anticipated year that we expect those expenditures to be incurred. We can start with 2026. We anticipate spending $27,400,000 in 2026, about $9.3 million in 2027, $2 million in 2028, $2 million in 2029, $2 million in 2030, for a total of $77.7 million in expenditures over the next five years. To support those projects and those expenditures, we have a five-year revenue plan. Here are the projections for those five years, and the revenue source that we intend to utilize in order to cover these projects. And so as you will see, we plan to spend $62 million in bond proceeds that we just discussed, we're working with the city on that. We will have general revenue, which comes from our folks over at the city, in the form of their city transfer. And then we anticipate using $3.2 million in fund balance to cover the Johnson Learning Center, or the Connector, if you will. Again, going back to that total, with $77.7 million, we also have to make sure the revenues match the expenses, and so we are good there, and we should be covered for the next five years in terms of funding. Some future considerations that we are anticipating, we heard a lot earlier about an all-ed program, so I'm glad to see that made the list, that seemed to be a hot topic earlier. Central office space, central registration space, a CTE early childhood development program, STEM center and robotics competition space, teacher housing, and then Weems Elementary School replacement, which, from my understanding, we're on a 10-year rotation, so this would be about 10 years out. And so with that, I'll take any questions that you all may have.
Looking to my right, any questions down there? Mrs. Williams, do you have any? To my left, Mrs. Breja.
I just want to complement the changed format of this presentation. I think it was, I feel like I may be stealing member of Spall's thunder here, but the format does make it clear what we're actually doing, what we're actually planning. I do look forward to those future considerations, especially the alternative education program, and it's never, you know, the Weems replacement slash major refurbishment is 10 years away, but it's never too soon to start thinking about it, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Spall?
Yeah, I'll just say it was a refreshing new take on, you know, a boring old subject, but we very much appreciate your attention to detail, and, you know, I especially do love seeing our future considerations always carry over. It's very helpful. Pictures are helpful, you know, all of it's very easy to understand, the general public, which we very much appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair? Any questions?
Mr. Kelly, thank you for the presentation. You've noted all the requests that we had, and we appreciate that, we look forward to approving this at a future meeting. Will that be our next meeting?
It'll be the next meeting, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, I would briefly like to acknowledge MEA is in the house, Anna Di Maria, Jenny Higginbotham, Tammy Potts, Brandon Fincham was here earlier. Thank you for being here for such a long meeting. And I'm going to go to my student representatives, so they can give their comments before they depart for the evening, since it's getting late. I'll go first to Ms. Bland, and congratulations to your mom tonight.
Thank you. Excuse my voice, I'm getting over an illness.
Uh-oh.
Okay. Good evening. Congratulations to all award winners tonight, especially my mom, Mrs. Bland, on her substitute award. And thank you, Dr. Chapman, for the very thorough presentation tonight. Reminder, tomorrow is a half-day, and there will be no school on November 1st through the 5th. This week is Emotional Wellness Week at Osborne. Remember to wear green on Friday to spread the word. It is okay to not be okay, but it is not okay to be silent. Please join us in erasing the negative stigma around mental health. Seniors, Virginia College Application Week is here. Please see Mr. Sandsbury in the College Career Center to receive your application fee waivers. If you're not busy trick-or-treating on Halloween, be sure to come to our very last home football game at Osborne against Battlefield. I promise you will have a spooky time. I hope everyone had a great end to Quarter One. Let's start Quarter Two off on a good note. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bland. Ms. Breeden?
I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Ms. Bland actually stole some of my words, so it's even shorter. Oh, I didn't. It's Emotional Wellness Week, and then it was wear green on Friday, the 25th, in support of mental health, so please show up in green, like we did last week for orange, there was a lot of participants, so I was happy to see that. And then also on Friday, Baldwin is having, excuse me, Baldwin's having Boonanza. I'm not exactly sure the time, I think it's like 6 o'clock, but show up in your costumes, it'll be a nice time. And then just go vote if you're eligible, because voting season is here, and it's important to use your voice. Yeah, good night.
Thank you, Ms. Breeden, and you may both be excused for the rest of the meeting. Thank you for being here, we appreciate your input. Back to our regularly-scheduled meeting here. Okay. On our actual agenda, we have some new business. We've talked about it before, but tonight we need to vote on it, and that's School Board Legislative Priorities. Vice Chair Lisa Stevens will present these priorities for us again for 2025, and we will vote, right?
Thank you. This is the finalized legislative priorities prior to voting, to accept or not accept them as-is. As you may know, we used to use a long pamphlet form. We chose this year to break it down a little bit, and do what's called a one-pager, which is one page, front and back, and to make sure that it's aligned with our strategic plan, and it's laid out to support our strategic plan. Do we need to discuss it? Any questions on it?
We've discussed it before, I have no questions, anyone else?
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the 2025 legislative priorities as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Spall, second by Mrs. Brooks. The School Board of the City of Manassas approve the 2025 legislative priorities as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, next up, surplus property resolution. Again, we discussed this at the last meeting, and if there are any questions, Dr. Newman, did you want to say anything? You've already said. Okay. If there's any questions or concerns, please show your hand, so I can call on you. Nope? If not, we'll take a motion.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the surplus property resolution R 2024-06 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks. That the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the surplus property resolution R 2024-06 as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. All right, now we're going to head on to School Board Members' Comments, and I will go first to Mrs. Breja.
Thank you, just really brief comments tonight. Congratulations, of course, to all of the apples and pears, but one apple in particular was my daughter's kindergarten teacher, and I was very happy to see her there tonight. And Boonanza, as Ms. Breeden mentioned, is Friday at 6:00 PM, that is the start time, and I'm always thankful to all of the Osborne students who come to make that a special activity for the kids. So I will be there, and I will see you there if you're going as well. And I just wanted to put it out there, tell everybody, check your email, check your Facebook, the calendar survey is live, so if you have opinions on the next two years of our academic calendar, now is your chance, please weigh in. That's all from me, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Breja. Mrs. Spall?
Okay, I also want to thank all the Apple and Pear Award winners, and especially our super subs. It's so nice to see so many former teachers coming back to work for us. Today's kind of a special day for me. Tonight marks three years to the day since my appointment to this board. That's been 199, 1,099 days and 1,099 chances to learn, listen, and adapt to effect the maximum positive change on the direction of our schools. In that time, I've seen that progress always has obstacles, and continued changes are always necessary to keep moving forward. Our board has had the opportunity to fill six principal vacancies, as well as a number of important roles in central office and outstanding, with outstanding individuals, laser-focused not on, laser-focused on our Manassas community's needs for the next 10-plus years. The board has voted to improve athletic fields and feed all children breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We have raised starting salaries for teachers and given substantial increases to all staff positions. We have new Dean School out to bid, and this building will be delivered in 2026. We have brought weapons deterrence and increased security to our schools. We have introduced electric buses. We have instituted e-hall passes, discussed tonight, to our middle and high schools to help track student movement inside our building. We have begun the JLC enclosure to keep our kids safe. We currently offer 11 of the state's approved 17 CTE pathways in our high school, and enriched programming such as immersion and GT in our lower grades. We have an aviation academy coming, as well as an award-winning robotics club after school. We have dedicated and smart multilingual learners, who might not yet be passing English-worded SOLs, but they are growing and engaging in our school communities, and their excellence is imminent. We have winning sports, fine arts, and literary programs. Is everything perfect in Manassas City Public Schools? Not yet, but I am sure we are in the best position possible for rapid improvement going forward. With my remaining 800 days, I intend to make every moment as productive as a NASA space mission, in order to cultivate the environment our students and staff are so deserving of, because there is nothing they cannot achieve with the right support. This is my promise to you as a board member, a former parent, a citizen, and a leader with a vision. Remember the Snow Day Video Contest due 11:15. Fill out the calendar survey on our website and Facebook page. Remember to vote on or before 11:05. And what I had added but taken out was discussion of, you know, we have an all-ed program on our radar, and it's really nice to see it highlighted tonight. It was great to see how many people nodded their heads that it's necessary, and we deserve to bring this to fruition for our kids. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall, that's a great list. I will go next to Mr. Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say congratulations to everyone recognized this evening, and a big shout-out to our Transportation Department, big shout-out to our bus drivers, they do a great job in protecting our most valuable assets, which is our students. So again, great thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Williams?
Yes, real quick, I also want to thank the Apple winners, Pear winners, and the super substitutes. That reminded me of that show, what were they called, what was it called? Incredibles, where they used to say, that guy used to say, "Super suit," so it just reminded me of that. So I'm picturing substitutes with their big suits on, but their work goes hand-in-hand with everybody, and it's an honor to be recognized by your own peers, and I think they all should be very proud. And that is all I have tonight, because we're all over here coughing, and we have more work to do tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. I want to echo what the others said, especially Ms. Spall, and I also want to remind everyone, be safe and be kind, because our kids are out there and they're watching. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. And I too got to see my daughter's teacher as an Apple Award winner, so that was pretty cool, and I saw a few former teachers of my children as Apple, Pear, and Super Sub winners. To continue on the celebration of International Dyslexia Month, I wanted to share some information from the International Dyslexia Association's website's fact page, which can be found at dyslexia.org. Dyslexia is a language-based learning disability. Dyslexia refers to a cluster of symptoms which result in people having difficulties with specific language skills, particularly reading. Students with dyslexia usually experience different difficulties with other language skills, such as spelling, writing, and pronouncing words. Dyslexia is not due to either lack of intelligence or desire to learn. With appropriate teaching methods, students with dyslexia can learn successfully. It's estimated that perhaps as many as 15% to 20% of the population as a whole have some symptoms of dyslexia, including slow or inaccurate reading, poor spelling, poor writing, or mixing up similar words. So before you judge someone who may not read as well as you, or may not enjoy reading, take a minute to think about this, and also remember audiobooks are still books, and they qualify as reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And for my comments tonight, I want to just echo what Mrs. Radford said about it being School Bus Safety Week, and tomorrow is Bus Driver Appreciation Day, so I look forward to a visit to the school bus office, and I'm really glad that it has changed from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Friday night, your school board here worked the concession stand at Osborne High School at the game. It was a lot of fun, and it was a lot of work, and I would like to encourage any parents or, you know, friends that want to help out at concessions, please contact the Osborne Athletic Boosters. And tonight, when we came in, we got a really lovely card from the boosters, thanking us for helping them out on Friday night, and it says, "It's easy to be grateful when there are wonderful people like you in the world." Thank you, Chair Seberg and the school board, we appreciate you. Sincerely, Cassandra Deanna Maricel, Osborne Boosters. Thank you so much for all your help on Friday, we hope you join us again. And they sent many, many treats to us. So we'll be going through that when we're in closed session later. I also wanted to say that Mrs. Spall, Vice Chair Stevens, myself, together with Dr. Stevenson and Dr. Newman, we've been participating, not all together, but two or three at a time, in the Regional Public School Leaders Network, which is facilitated out of George Mason's Char School of Public Policy. We discuss matters that affect us, including the VOE's accountability system. It's important to be accountable, but it's also important to have meaningful measures, and there'll be more coming out about this soon. Let's see, I'm glad that a lot of families attended the cell-phone-free information nights, I trust that all the questions and concerns have been addressed. We look forward to more information coming out from principals in the coming weeks, and we look forward to a smooth start come January. On Thursday, we'll be celebrating Literacy Day and Read for the Record at Weems Elementary. The reading, this year's book selection is Piper Chen Sings. Each year, the featured book is carefully selected to be anti-bias, anti-racist, and reflective of diverse experiences and identities, and I can hardly wait to go read to those kids. November's going to be a very busy month for school board. We have two joint meetings with City Council, which includes presenting our legislative priorities for this next session. We have a regular school board meeting, budget meeting, Young Readers Week, and our annual VSBA conference. So just wanted to let everybody know all that, and that concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you all for being here, and can I get a motion to go to closed session?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purposes. Discussion 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2425-0224, and 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 3 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purpose. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically the consideration of a potential lease agreement.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purposes. One, Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2425-0- 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2425-0224, and 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 3 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purpose. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically the consideration of a potential lease agreement. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.[1777.74]